One second. I call this City Commission's special meeting of Monday, May the 6th, 2024, to order at 5:04 PM. May we please stand for the invocation, provided by Commissioner Everett McPherson, Senior, followed with the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we come to you as humble as we know how. Ask you that you just give us wisdom and understanding with this decision that we're about to make. Ask that you just guide our minds and our hearts, Father, so that we will pick the best candidate, Father, the candidate that you will be pleased with, Father, so that we can move our city forward. Father, we ask that you just give us divine understanding, divine wisdom, Father. Ask that you just give our constituents patience with us, Father, as we move this city forward. In the mighty name of Jesus, we give you all the praises and all the honor. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Jesus to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every creature and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Baath.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner Carolyn Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk, here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, staff, and most importantly, thank our residents for being here today to witness and participate in our special call meeting for the purpose of selecting an interim city manager. Also, would like to thank the nine candidates who have submitted their application for being interviewed. We had two withdrawers, so now we'll have to interview seven candidates again. We wish each of them good luck in this process. This meeting was called to interview for the interim. Our permanent city manager currently, Rodney Lucas, has officially resigned as effective May 11th. So we want to have a person in place to move this city and continue to move it forward as we look and seek and search for a permanent city manager. Thank you. So at this time, what we'll be doing, we're going to interview the seven candidates. They've already been scheduled. Some are going to be interviewed through Zoom and some is going to be interviewed here live. The city clerk have a schedule. We're going to go accordingly to that. The interviewer is going to have an opportunity to answer as the best they can, to their best ability, ten questions, including a presentation that they will provide at the beginning to give a overview of who they are, to talk about their job resume, their cover letter, their application, and why they feel they are the best candidate for this job. So without further delay, I will give the city manager, I don't know if you have any opening statements you want to make at this time, and if not, we'll go on straight into the interview.
Mayor, are the citizens going to have a chance to comment? Ask questions?
No, not during this process. We didn't include that in there, the decision.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I think you, since you are going to be making a decision, you can either put that in the beginning or at the end.
Comments.
But you should allow during the meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So we will allow for public comments during this time, and we would actually commission, if there's a preference, for public comments to be at the beginning of the end. What would be your preference?
I had a question before we got started, because I had a few clarifications, being new in the position, before we started the process, that I wanted to ask the attorney before we started the process. So, I don't know if you want me to do that first, or we can, it doesn't matter, the citizens can go first, so that they can speak first, so we can hear what they have to say before we start the process.
You can speak last, when we hear what they have to say.
I think they'll be the next one, because they want to hear what.
Okay, well, we'll let them speak. So that's fine, if they want to speak last then. But I do have a few questions I wanted to ask the attorney for clarifications about the process before we get started, if I can do that, for clarification, if that's okay.
Madam Attorney, I have a few questions, because I want to make sense, this is such an important decision that we're making. I just want to make sure that I'm making the best decision for the city, since this is, so I just have a few clarifications, if you can help me. I know we, the position was advertised as city manager instead of interim city manager. There were two different applications on the website, and one applicant has different applications from the eight other applicants also. And information went out also with Jacqueline Ramsey's name on it as well. So I just wanted to know from a legal aspect, can we interview for the interim city manager position instead of the city manager position, because out of the nine applicants, seven of them put on there that they were applying for the city manager position instead of the interim position?
Through the mayor, I think absolutely you can go forward. The intent and the vote of this commission was that you were interviewing for interim. I believe, based on my conversation with the city manager, that all of the applicants were made aware that this is a process for interim, and that they wanted to be considered for the permanent city manager, that would still be available for them to do it at a later date.
Okay, and my other question is, we put out that we had minimum requirements for the position that was established. I just wanted to know, can we, because we were given all the applicants, can we interview all applicants, whether they met the criteria or not? Can we interview them and possibly hire someone who did not meet the minimum requirements that we put out for the position? And will that put the city, a liability at the city, if that is done?
No, ma'am, you all can decide what you want to do. You did discuss during the last regular meeting that you were going to put out certain requirements. It is up to the majority of the board as to what you all decide ultimately you want to do for the interim position, but that really is a commission decision.
Okay, and my last question is, so is that something we're going to have to vote on at the end, or do we do that before we get started? Because I was, I know, I was, I see we have some questions here, and we have a scoring system. So one of my other questions was, since we are doing the hiring of this applicant, how did it come about? The commission as a whole, did we come up with these questions? Did we come up with this scoring system? What is going to be the process after we interview?
You all can decide that now. I think those are recommendations coming from the city manager. It wasn't something that was discussed in your last meeting, but you all can decide how you want to, if you want more questions or less questions before you get started, or if you want to have, you know, whatever process you want to have, I think you probably want to take it up right now, Mr. Mayor, and deal with your process. So if you choose not to have a scoring system, you can not have one. If you choose to, you know, in other words, if you choose to do it by motion, you can do that. If you want to do it on a scoring system, you can. Of course, these are all public record documents, so it's not a, you know, it's not a blind anything, it's just the clerk will be adding up and looking at it, and you have to put your name on it and that kind of thing. But you all, you all will determine what process you decide to use for this, if it's not what's being suggested tonight.
Because I noticed there were some applicants that didn't have an application, so I didn't know if we were going to use an elimination process, whether they met the requirements or not, were we going to eliminate any that didn't meet the requirements, or since that process has not been discussed.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Well, that was one of my concerns, is on the scoring system, like the, why are we scoring, we're here appointing of the interim city manager, and I know this is just stuff like pretty much for our record, not that we have to turn it into the clerk and they score, and we choose, because we choosing tonight as the interim, you're appointing an interim tonight.
Right.
So I was, the question was, is these just our, for our notes taking, that we can do, and make our decision at the end of the meeting, or with the motion that we made?
Let's see if I can answer some of these questions. This process is being conducted because we chose at our last commission meeting, or the one prior to that, that we would interview the applicants for the interim position. We know that normally some commission appoint, this is still an appointment, but it's doing the interview process, and that's why we have a scoring system. So the information here, the questions was created with the assistance of the city clerk and the city manager. In the past, even on our regular interview process, we have always tended to use that process. Sometime the HR directors involved in that, but we have previously allowed staff to come up with these questions. These scoring rankings have been one that we have always used for an individual with a score of five, for instance. I'm going to just have the city clerk just read the scoring rating out, so everyone would be aware, even the public, how we're going to score this.
We want the, so they have a total of 11 questions. The maximum points are 55, in each category, each question you have from one to five.
Could you read the, what constitutes a five and a four, if you would? It's on the back of the rating, I just want the public to know how we're rating.
A score of a five, meaning the candidate's answer went above and beyond what was expected, the answer completed and well stated, the candidate has superior technical skills overall, well qualified. A score of a four, a candidate answer went into detail. The answer was complete and well stated. He or she has good technical skills overall, mostly qualified. A score of a three means the candidate provided some detail to the answer, he or she has adequate technical skills overall, qualified. A score of a two mean the candidate answer was short and didn't provide sufficient explanation. He or she has marginal technical skills overall, somewhat qualified. A score of a one, the candidate did not answer clear or related to the question, he or she did not sufficiently, does not have sufficient technical skills overall, not qualified.
And the question whether or not the applicants all are qualified or met the minimum requirement, based on what I received, it appears that they all have the question in reference to a job application. We did get some criticism previously in other interview process, or other selection process, where manager didn't even have an application on file. Before they are offered the job, we will make sure that each of the applicants complete an application. I don't know if any of it happened, it may be one or two, but we'll make sure that done as a criteria for having this position.
Mayor, can the city clerk, for clarification, explain to me, when they say technical skills from us interviewing them, can you explain how are we going to be able to determine the technical skills that they are having from?
Unfortunately, the city clerk didn't draft this, these interview questions, but when I think, what I'm thinking, when they say techno, technical skills, that mean writing skills, different type of things you ask the city manager, whether they can present, do they know anything about legislation, different questions that you're going to inquire during this process. That's the only thing I would think technical skills are.
And city manager, do you have anything else you want to just add on to that, if you choose to do?
Well, you're looking for professional, experienced person, so from that technical aspect. Mayor, we're going to have to put up with this.
Put up with what?
See, Mr. Love, and the audience, we're going to ask that everyone really be quiet in this process, so we'll be able to conduct the business of the city. We're going to ask that, and we're going to ask at once, if someone continue to have talking in here, we're going to ask them to be escorted out. We hope that that don't come to that point. Again, I would say overall, we have a scoring system, we have an interview system, it's not going to be perfect, but I think this is a pretty good gauge in assisting us in appointing the best candidate that we can. It's a lot better, and that's just a personal view, than just appoints on one without going through any process. At least each applicant have a fair opportunity to be interviewed and considered for this position, and I think that would be the goal of all of us, I would hope, while we're doing this process.
Can I just add, before we move forward to a permanent position, that we get verification? What I mean by verification is official transcripts, verifying degrees and stuff like that.
Absolutely, and even if our HR is not in place, which it should temporarily be, I know that person is either resigning, but there are some agencies that does exactly that, they do a thorough background check, make sure credentials are certified, and all of those type of things, that before we actually give the position or appoint a position to anyone, especially on our permanent, more permanent one, we definitely want to follow those type of processes.
Mr. Mayor, there is one little other small issue. Under Section 2-2.8 of your city code, it talks about attendance. You are able to have commissioners attend virtually via telephone or other electronic means. However, it says that if approved by a majority of the commission present, so if you all could just make, have a, make a motion for the, for Commissioner Bolden be able to participate with his vote being counted today, that will be consistent with this code provision.
Okay, and even before putting that to a motion, I would, I need to even know how we are going to be able to count the commissioner vote, what would be a means of doing that? Would he be able to, on the telephone, in some kind of way, give the total to the city clerk? But we really need to know how that process is going to work there also.
Yes, you could have him announce it. He could give, you know, affirmation through his announcements. He could also send in writing something to the city clerk in an email, I suppose, that meets the same criteria and the same format that you're considering it today, so that it's consistent with what you all are doing here.
We need to have a motion to allow the city commissioner, which would be Commissioner Bolden, to be able to participate in this process, and having his vote counted, I would really suggest that he announce and send some type of written communication to our city clerk of his score for each candidate. If I, if that's in agreement with the commission, I would like for a motion and a second to that effect.
Mayor, I make a motion that you allow Commissioner Bolden via Zoom to participate in the hiring of the interim city manager, and vote be counted, as well as the other commission.
Yes, that's what they're doing.
Are there a second?
Any second?
Oh, we're waiting on the attorney. We, I'm sorry, Mr.
Commissioner Bolden, I don't, I'm not sure, he, Ix, could he second that motion?
Yes, he can.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Bolden to allow Commissioner Bolden to participate in this interview selection process via Zoom.
And what it, what it requires is approved by a majority of the commissioners present, so while he can second, you still have to approve by the majority of the commissioners present. So that would be a majority of you, the four of you.
Call for question, Commissioner Cobb.
I need a pen.
Hearing non question, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden.
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Mayor Baath.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Any further clarification before we begin? Anyone have any additional question or need any more clarification of the process and how we're going to conduct this interview process? Hearing none, at this time, we're going to move forward with our selection process, and we'll have the clerk at this time announce the first applicant to be interviewed for the position of interim city clerk, city manager of the city of Bohocay.
Yes, sir. The first applicant is Mr. Howard, Howard Brown, and he's via Zoom.
Mr. Brown, welcome to the city of Bohocay via Zoom. You are the first applicant to be interviewed for the interim city manager position. We're going to begin by asking you a series of questions, and the first question is a presentation by yourself. We'd like to have you consider, and this rating would be considering, the appearance, the professionalism, the delivery, your resume, your job application, and your work experience. So at this time, you have up to 15 minutes to provide a overview of your experience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I coming in loud and clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the commission. My name's Howard Brown. I'm currently the owner of a consulting company that provides interim planning director and interim city manager consulting. I currently have a couple of clients in numerous communities in Florida and Georgia. I, I've done this since leaving full-time city management back on December 8, 2022, when I was the village manager with the Village of Indiatown, a community similar to yours that's right next to you, actually, close to Lake Okeechobee. I served there as village manager for years, so I have South Florida rural community experience right there in your locale. I actually live in Palm Beach Gardens, in Palm Beach County, and I've lived there for about six years. Before that, I was a city manager in Belle, California. Now Belle, California is interesting, because it's a small city. It's located in Los Angeles County, California, and I was city manager there for several years. Actually running a municipal government there was very challenging. It had a number of issues where I came in, actually, I came in after a financial scandal unfolded that involved elected officials and the former city manager. And my job was to come in and fix it, and I did that while I worked there. And before that, I was city manager in the city of Muskogee, which is located in northeast Oklahoma. I was the first African-American city manager there in that community. What's interesting to note is that the community was predominantly white community, and while working there, I was able to really hone my skills as city manager, because it was my first city manager job. That job prepared me for all the other positions I've held in local government. And I'm only talking about city manager experience, I've been working since city management for about 11 years now, and on the public side mostly, and in the last year as a private consultant. The, my experience in city management is not just in urban cities in major metropolitan areas, but also rural communities like Okeechobee, faced the same challenges that a city of Bohocay would face. Before I got into city management, I was a planner. I worked as a planning director in a number of cities. I served as planning director in two different states and three different jurisdictions. City of Okeelacca, I worked there as the planning director. City of Lilleburn, Georgia, which is in Atlanta metro area, city of Albany, Georgia, which is in South Georgia. And so I have a number of experience, a number of, a number of years of experience working as a planning director, and before that, I worked in code enforcement, as a chief of code enforcement for the Seaball area lakes, which is located in Broward County, central Broward County. I worked there for a couple of years as a supervisor, it was actually my first supervisor job. Before that, I was a code enforcement officer for Scandia County, which is in Pensacola. I am from, originally from Pensacola, Florida. I wasn't born there, but I was raised there, and I consider Pensacola, Florida, my home. The, I actually, well, that sums up experience, and I just wanted to put that on the table quickly. Educationally speaking, I went to Florida State University. I have a degree, a bachelor's degree in criminology from Florida State University. I have a master's degree in public administration from the University of West Florida. I have a, and I also did doctoral work while attending the University of West Florida, but never completed it. I actually have some certifications that I'm very proud of. One is becoming a member of the American Planning Association, where while, while working as a planning director, I felt the need that I need to be not only a member of the American Planning Association, but also become a certified planner. I became an American Institute certified planner several years ago, and I felt that was a very big accomplishment, because in the planning field, that was an endorsement that you knew planning and that you could do planning well. And so I worked as a certified planning director in those communities. The, the other thing that I'm proud of is the Prudential Manager Certification. The International City Manager Association is an agency or nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of city managers, county managers, and not only does it provide for advocacy, it provides for education and training of city managers nationally. It's probably the only organization that, that can professionally train city managers to get up and running in a community, and I'm happy and proud to report that I am a Prudential Manager within International City Manager Association. And I did, it's not there, I always, I always professionally developed myself throughout the years, because I graduated from college more than 30 years ago. I know I look young, and you're probably wondering, 30 years is a long time, but it's, it's not a very long time in municipal government. And throughout that time, I always continued to train myself professionally and educate myself personally. And so a couple of years ago, I was selected and attended the Harvard Kennedy School. They have a three-week executive leadership program where you are chosen by them to attend this training, and I went. where you were chosen by them to attend this training. And I went there for three weeks, learned about things such as negotiating, how to negotiate anything, not just business deals, but how to negotiate in, at work personally, professionally, and organizationally. And, and it wasn't just negotiation skills that you learned there, but you learn a lot about the history of the country, along with some other practical things that you can take back to your organization. And so that was, that was really my last bit of training that I had was back in two thousand and two. And obviously, I attend annual conferences with the International City Management Association and the American Planning Association respectfully, just to keep abreast of what's going on currently in the fields of planning and public administration. And so that's really me in a nutshell. I didn't want to take all your time because I think that I could, you know, really do a good job for the city of Pahokee. I think that I understand the community, at least, at least what I see on the videos, and I think I can really help to make a difference in the community. I'm currently working in different roles with my company, but I would love the opportunity to have to work permanently or as an interim with the city of Pahokee. And I hope that, you know, I know you're reviewing my application and my resume, but it does not speak to me the person. I'm married. I have two adult children and two grandchildren. And so I spend a lot of my time these days with family because it's very important. And, and that's where having the private consulting business, it, it actually helps me a number of ways. It helps me pay the bills, but it also forces me time with my, my, my children and my grandchildren. And so, but I, I love city management, and I love making communities better. There's not one community that I've been in that I didn't make substantial changes there that the community benefit from either now or will be in the future. There have been a number of city future projects that I've worked on, specifically by purchasing a, a multimillion-dollar water and sewer plant when I was the village manager at the Villages of Indiatown. This water and sewer plant was purchased to improve water quality and to lower rates in that community. And I'd like to say that under my leadership, not only were we able to purchase or acquire this private or investor-only utility, but we were able to make it positive revenue, revenue positive in very short order and reduce rates there as well. And so I'm very proud of that accomplishment because the community, the Villages of Indiatown, it's located, you know, not too far away from, it's not on the lake like Pahokee, but it's around the lake. And it's got similar, similar issues in terms of the economy, in terms of economic development and those types of things. So the other thing that I did while I was there was we, at the, working with the city village council there, I worked collaboratively with them, and we pursued a lot of state appropriations and grant funds, which, you know, in the four years I was there, I mean, just the state appropriations alone, we probably were able to get about north of twenty million dollars in state appropriations directly to be spent on road improvements in Indian, Indian Town and fixing the water and sewer plant that we, we acquired. In the, in the first two years, we developed a five-year pavement management plan, and we were able to pave almost every street in that plan in two years, under budget, in very short time. And that's because we had a defined plan. We had, we hired really good consultants to help us think through long-term issues. And we had, we had the money to get these things done. These were the things that the community was springing for. So, you know, that was just a couple of things that was done in paving the roads, paving almost every road in Indian Town, including buying the water and sewer plant, making revenue positive, getting money to fix the water and sewer plant, and hiring staff. Because when I started, I was their first permanent manager, first permanent village manager, but one of the first employees they hired. I think now there's about thirty-six employees there. And so I'm very proud of that because it's, it's a well-run city there in West Martin County. And for, for those of you who haven't gone by there, if you, you ever visit Indian Town, you'll see there's been a lot of incremental growth in the last four years, including a development project, huge development project, about two thousand units that was entitled, that I was involved with helping getting it re-entitled so they can get to groundbreaking. And some of the commercial developments that occurred there on State Route seven ten, I was definitely responsible for. And so there are a number of things that I could go on and on about personnel management, economic development, and just, and, and those things. These are the kinds of things that I can do. These are the kind of things that I've done. And I wanted to give you some recent experience in that, so it gives, it would give you a better, a better view of me in terms of what I could do for the city of Pahokee.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for that information there. You took approximately thirteen minutes of the fifteen, so great job. Next would be the, second question would be, why did you want to work in the city of Pahokee? And how can we expect, what can we expect in the first ninety days?
A really good question. So here's what I would tell you. Pahokee is a city that, that I would love to work for, number one. I've, I've always had affinity for municipalities that are in various phases and stages. And I have not known a lot about Pahokee until I moved here from California several years ago, but I have followed the cities of Pahokee, Bell Lake, and South Bay very closely because they are very similar demographics to Village of Indian Town. And so I always knew that the, the issues that were happening in Indian Town would, would be something, or issues that would happen in Pahokee would be issues that could, could happen in Indian Town. And so I always paid attention to the cities around the lake. Now, I would tell you that in the first nine days, I would be getting to learn the staff and developing a plan, working along with the, the city commission. But what I can tell you is that as an interim, you're not gonna do much of that. So I can't tell you that I'll come in and do a strategic plan, and we'll work together on very, on an action plan on what you want to see accomplished in the next ninety days, six months, or a year. But what I would do is come there fairly quick, get to know the staff, pick up what's been left off. For example, if you've already done a strategic plan and you have an action plan you're already doing, I'm gonna pick that plan up, and I'm gonna work with the council and the staff to make sure that we continue to develop that on an interim basis. On an interim basis, in the first ninety days, you will see me be more of an augmentation of your existing staff. I will get to know them on a personal and a professional level. And I will get to know the organization intimately, so I can help you. And I think I can do that because I know how to work with councils, and I know how to work with employees that work there. So that's, in the first ninety days, that's what I would do. And that is, one, if you have an existing plan, then follow it and continue it. Secondly, work with the staff and the city commission and, and give you, and give you an update of where you're at financially, organizationally, a check under the hood every, every couple of weeks when we meet at city council meeting, on the city manager report. You know, I can give you an update on operations, which would include, you know, where we're at on the, on the audit, as well as your budget because that's something that's gonna, you're gonna have to get going right now as you're at mid-year. And this would be the time that you would start your budget process. So, so focus on, attend a budget calendar for you, so you'll know exactly what the, the, the dates are in order to get the budget process started. Because right now is where, this is mid-year. You should be going over your mid-year expenses and revenue right now and developing what your budget plan scenario would be for FY twenty-five. So those are the things I would focus on quickly. And by the way, Mayor and members of the council, commission, I've, I've done budgets in Florida, Georgia, Oklahoma, and California. And I'm well aware of what trim is and what the budget process is. And with, with your five million dollar or nine million dollar all-funds budget, I think I would have no problem coming in quickly and working with the council and the staff to develop one in very short order.
Thank you. We're gonna move to, we're gonna move to the next city commissioner for the next two questions.
Good evening, good evening. Have you ever had to fire an employee? And if so, what for? And what was your process to terminate?
As city manager, in every municipality that I've worked in, in most manager forms of government, it requires or it, it actually says that the city manager is responsible for the hiring and firing of all employees that work in the municipality. So the city manager is intimately involved in terminating employees. Now, the council will set policies related to personnel. And I'm not, I have not read your first, you know, manual, Darren Pahokee, but I suspect that, you know, anyone that gets terminated at the city of Pahokee would have to follow the personnel policies that have been approved by you. Now, the question is, have I terminated? I've terminated folks at every level, as a middle manager, as a frontline supervisor, as a city manager. And the higher up you get in the organization, the disciplinary actions or terminations, they are very different because you're affecting people's livelihood and their career trajectory. And so we're very careful about terminating employees without cause because we don't want to hurt someone's career, especially if we're not sure about what they did or did not do. So in the terminations that I personally handled, I made sure that I followed the policy that was the personnel policies. And I consulted with our legal team if necessary. And obviously, I always tried to negotiate a departure with department directors because, you know, sometimes it's just not a good fit. And, and that was something that I'd like doing, I, you know, which was negotiating departures as opposed to terminating someone. And obviously, we have to be careful when we terminate employees, especially ones at the higher level, because it can create problems down the road for recruitment purposes and these types of things. And so I'm very conscious of it, but, but I, I've had to make adjustments at every level. And I can, I can, I don't want to say, I don't want to say the title of people and those types of things because some of those, some of those terminations resulted in separation agreements and things like that. And it just would not be professional for me to say the exact nature of who they were, because I've only been in three cities. I'm sorry, sir. I know that does not answer your question directly, but I, I'm trying to be respectful of, of these folks that were affected by me in previous jurisdictions. And, and I also want to be fair to you and try to answer the question you asked.
Next question. Why did you apply for the interim city manager position with the city of Pahokee?
I live in Palm Beach County, and Pahokee is a place that I'd like to be in. I, I've not just applied for Pahokee because I'm, I'm looking for a position. I, I actually have friends in Pahokee, and I like the city. You know, even when I was village manager in Indian Town, you know, I was invited to come to Pahokee and see the, the Fourth of July fireworks and you name it. So this is a place that would be on my radar if an opportunity availed itself. And so for a number of reasons, personally and professionally, they meet that, they meet, they check those boxes.
We may have gotten out of a little order. I'm not quite sure, but the next interviewer will be Vice Mayor Mervin. The next two questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. First question is, how much work experience do you have as an interim city manager or in municipal government field?
Well, I would say I have about, about six months of interim city manager experience in two different jurisdictions at the same time. So my company right now provides, provides interim city manager services in two jurisdictions right now currently. So this is, this is like, it's a great question because, you know, working in city management as long as I have, I'm seeing an evolution occur in a profession where a lot of city managers are moving into the interim work, the interim city management field, which, which has become very attractive. You get to do good work for communities, but you don't have to, you know, get run out of town on the work field because you're leaving anyway. And so it's attracted to a lot of us, folks who've been in the field for a while, because the city needs a professional, experienced interim city manager. And, and obviously, this helps build, this builds my profile. And, and so it's just a good, it's just a good fit all around. So as far as being interim, you know, I'm doing it now.
Thank you. The next question is, how many years of city budget experience do you have?
Probably twenty years of city budgeting experience, about eighteen, I guess eleven as, as city manager, about six as, seven, eight as, as a department director. And obviously, as the chief of code enforcement, you know, it was a divisional budget, and I was responsible for having put together the operating department operating budget when I worked at the city of Lauderdale Lake years ago. But I have experience in municipal budgets in the states of Florida, Georgia, California, and Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Derek Bowden on Zoom, if you would ask the next two questions.
Can you guys hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. First off, I heard you mention your company. Is that a consulting firm, sir? And if that is, are you looking to be hired as a firm or as a person?
It's interesting because I've been following your meetings, and I reached out to the mayor with, with a proposal, and it was all of the above. I'm interested in interim work, either with my company or myself, but it depends on if I, if I'm worthy, or if the council, the commission is looking at me, then I would have to look at what options would be on the table. But right now, I'm just trying to interview for the interim and see where, see where that goes.
My next question, on your, I guess, on your previous, in your previous tenures as a city manager, what was your salary? And I guess I'll ask the additional question along with that. It appears, and I'm not, I could be wrong, but it appears that we're kind of around a hundred and twenty K. What has been your salary in your previous city manager positions?
It really depends on, on the state. But my last role, I think my last salary is like one fifty-one. It was one fifty-one, but, but I was getting what we call deferred comp, which is which is another $1,000 a month. So that didn't include my car allowance, but my salary was 151. Could have been a little bit more than that, maybe 153. It was 200 and something, and before that, it was, you know, the last city. Well, the biggest city I managed, I made the less money, believe it or not. But these jobs are not about money. I'm here to negotiate, you know, a position, and then hopefully I can get into talking about that. I'm not interested in the salary in as much as I'm interested in if 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 you feel like I could fit in Pahoke. And so the salary, I'm well aware of what the current city manager makes in Pahoke, and I'm aware of what the previous city managers have made in Pahoke because they're public, public information. So the salary doesn't, doesn't give me any pushback on what you guys can afford or not.
At this time, we'll move to the next two questions by Commissioner Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Brown. My first question is, what type of leader are you?
I am a participatory leader. I like to get input from people that I work with. I'd like to, I like to think that I'm I mean, people say leaders, we talk about leadership, leader, the leader of the organization is not just the person that that has the position, but it's it's who you go to for information or advice. And in organizations I've worked in, you know, I've been told that I've been called, they've called me the parish priest. It just appears everybody wants to come in my office and tell me what's going on in their world. And so that's been helpful because that has always ended up in being able to bring about cohesion in the organization. And and that's been parlayed into productivity. So I think my participatory leadership style has been very helpful in my growth and development as a city manager. And I think that's none of the stuff, none of the 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 business items can be accomplished or achieved without good staff in place rolling the same direction. And so I understand that, and I've understood that for a very long time, that nothing gets done unless the staff does it and that you, they participate in it. So I consider myself a participatory, a participatory manager or leader, and it's really based on, you know, a failure or two along the way, where I found out long years ago that if you didn't bring staff in at the beginning, you're not going to get a ribbon in our honor. So I always worked on including everyone in the whole decision-making process when I could. And I think being a participatory leader is what I
Thank you. My second question is, how many years of experience do you have conducting strategic planning sessions with the city commission or city council?
Well, some, some city councils don't want to do a strategic plan because sometimes the environment is just so so not productive that the council members might say, no, we don't want to even meet, meet together. And so I I'm happy to report that I've worked with some very tough councils over the years. And while they couldn't agree with each other, they did agree that we should have a long-range plan and and we should follow it. And so I was able to get, let's see here. Every city I've worked with, worked in, except for the last year that I was in Bell, California, I was able to get the city council or city commission or village council to do a strategic plan and do an update each year. So I would say about eight years total. Eight years total experience, put it together, strategic plan, working with the council to help develop it and organizing the efforts to make sure they coincide with the timeline deliverables. And I would say of that, of those eight years, they were I had a facilitator that was very helpful in getting, getting it done, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Love, we're in an interview, yes, sir. You're talking to questions from the public? Yeah, we determined we'll do it at the end. Yeah, your, your question would not be for the candidates, where there would be just an overview of this process and any other concerns or information you wanted to share. You even may have a preference there during the end and saying, whatever you want to say is just public comments, that's what we're doing. We're not, we're not going to be interviewing the actual candidates. Okay, the next two questions will come from the mayor, and my question would be, what is the highest number of employees you have had to manage?
803 full-time and maybe, maybe about 300 part-time. That was in Muskogee, Oklahoma. Currently, we have 608 employees at this city full-time. One of our cities, you know, about 28. Bell, we had 175. Indian Town, we had about 36.
Next question is, how many years of experience do you have managing city commission slash city council meetings?
That, that I've been in, with the exception of one, the city manager was responsible under the charter for the agenda. In the one city, it was the clerk, and we've worked together to put items on the agenda. I have been involved with helping helping implement ERP, recommending to the council to purchase that ERP, to do, you know, to manage the agendas, obviously. And so I think that I have some very good experience on working with the council, developing an appropriate ERP back in health for city because not all ERPs are good. You know, you have to really get one that's a good fit for you based on, you know, technical requirements and the council's use of it. So you want to, you don't want to put something on them that that they're not, that it's a learning curve would be longer. But a lot of the ERPs are the, these are agenda software systems that I'm talking about, just for clarification. These agenda software systems, we have to make sure that they're right sized for the organization, meaning that we want to make sure they're well-able. We want to make sure they're easy to navigate through. We want to make sure it's easy for the public on their side, see. But I have a number of experiences with that. City Plus, Minivo, City Plus, Minivo, Tyler, Agenda Quick. Those are different software systems that I've used or implemented in cities I've worked. And I just want to note that also in a small city, I'm not just delegating that, I'm actually doing it myself. So at the village of Indian Town and city of Bell, those were two cities that I was hands-on. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Great. Next, we have Commissioner Mike Fearsom asks the last question here on this.
Yes, sir. Have you ever been disciplined by a current or past commission or council? If so, why?
No, I have never been disciplined by a council or or commission, ever. Obviously, you know, I've had bloggers and and folks in the community that that won't let me be disciplined, but it's hard to discipline someone that has not done anything wrong. And so, so I would say no.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. That would conclude your interview process, and we appreciate you coming and via Zoom and participating in this process. We certainly would be making a decision, hopefully, at the conclusion of this process, which will be this evening, if we can get to it. Thank you.
Very much appreciate your time. Thank you.
What we'll do now, Commissioner, is just take a few minutes to tally your score and forward it to our city clerk for tabulation at the end.
Excuse me, Mayor Vab.
Yes, sir.
Are we to include Commissioner McPherson's last question?
I didn't, could you repeat that, please?
I said, are we to include Commissioner McPherson's last question? Was that included?
Yeah, the last question, we actually asked six. It was a little difficult to score in your particular two questions because we had a pre-list of the questions we was asking and rating. So we did do 11 scoring.
You said it was difficult to score my questions?
Yes, sir. We have a list of questions that we was going to ask all the applicants.
Oh, so I'm not at liberty to ask the questions that I came up with? I didn't know that.
Yeah, for the scoring process, it would have been difficult scoring that, to be honest. And we had a total of 11 questions we was going to actually score on. But still, the question was fine. We mentally have that in our mind, his answers and his response, but it wasn't a direct score unless some other commissioner found a way to properly score it outside of the 11 that we have.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest that what you said last is the way that you all go forward? Like, in other words, if you were able to take whatever questions that were asked and score on whatever the respondents, you know, gave an answer to. So whatever you all are able to do in your subjective opinions to score based on the criteria that you have, not necessarily assigning it to, you know, the particular questions. You follow me? Does everybody understand what I'm saying? So so that you don't, so the last part of what you said, if they're able to take from what was said and then score, let them do that. That way you have a, you know, it's clear and we don't have any challenges to the process. Does everybody follow me? Everybody understand what I'm saying?
So I'm only to ask the questions that were provided for me and not the questions that I came up with?
In other words, my suggestion is, Commissioner Bolden, is everything that was said, including your questions, will be considered by the commissioners as they score. So whatever the responses were, however they interpreted it, would be considered by the commission in their subjective opinions in doing their scoring.
I have a question, Madam Attorney. So we have a list of questions here, that's 11. So you're saying the questions that he asked, some kind of way, just figure it out and give points for that? Because here, we have 11 questions, and we have a point system here. Each one of them, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And so I guess to get a correct understanding, the question is not here. So my question is, how do we, we don't have the questions here on the paper. These were the pre-questions given to us. So I guess that was one of my questions I was asking at the beginning. How do, where do we, where do we, we don't even have the question on here. So how do we give it points?
So you you may determine that you don't think it's relevant and fitting into one of these categories. But my, my point is, if if the applicant said something during the interview process that you think will be assigned to one of the questions that was said, then you would give it, you would give it weight if you believe that's what you should do. You don't have to, but whatever was said, you can give it weight under the categories.
For instance, presentation, it could sort of fit into that category, but you're trying to get the most area where you feel that his answer could fit to fight into your total score in in mind.
Quickly, my concern is that, and the reason I ask these questions is, you know, we can have all the experience in the world, but if the salary requirements are not sufficient to the candidate, then, you know, that's a legitimate question I'm asking. I don't understand how that, you know, the answer to that could not be taken into consideration in the way that, you know, we're presenting these already created questions. I feel like I'm very qualified to ask very powerful questions in this regard, and I feel like those questions are kind of being set aside and reduced to being completely subjective.
So Mayor, my question also, the point, okay, say, for example, whatever the point system is, the clerk, once she, once we tally up, we hand them to the clerk. Then if she see what the high number is, that's who we motion to be the interim city manager? Like, I'm trying to figure that.
That would be the starting point. That's not totally necessary. It's almost like you go out and you 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 bid on something or you put in a request for proposal, and someone may be lower. But if this commission can come up with a slightly different scenario system, how they're going to do it, but normally it would, you would have that person normally as the top person. But for instance, if it close, say, I'm just using this as an example, say somebody got 55 points and the other one got 54. Knowing the points, you may consider seeing who was the majority top candidate for that position. But that's going to have to be discussed. I can't give you a black and white answer closely, but normally you would select, if you're doing it in a fair and process manner, you would select the highest one with the highest score. But it's always up to the commission how you do things. But to be consistent and fair, I would think that would be the best process, but it may not necessarily be the one that this commission decided to go with.
And then, again, like, say, if I have questions, like, depending on the city of Pahoke, we might have questions specific for, I know these are just general questions, but what if you have specific questions relates to the city of Pahoke? Because that's what we're choosing for, the city of Pahoke. You see what I'm saying? Like, that's why I don't, I know we have questions. Like, I know, I think, I think what I'm trying to say is, we listen to all the candidates, but we might have a specific question that we might ask relates just to Pahoke, the city of Pahoke. You know, these are just general questions to me.
Yeah, general.
You can, I can, I can sit and interview on these general questions.
What we're trying to do is be consistent and fair. Ask each candidate the same question so they have the same opportunity to provide the answers, so you can have some comparison. You know, we we could do and deviate from that, but we're going to take away the fairness of the process if we do, we're asking specifically different question to different candidate, which is which is, you know, theoretically is not a fair process to do. We have a set of question. I would hope we try to as much as possible, you know, adhere to the question that's been presented. This is an interim appointment and maybe during the city manager appointment, we, we can go over the process we wanna have and we're comfortable with and go from there, you know?
So, we keep these and then we look back on it, we have to turn them into the clerk for a weekend?
Yeah. I, to be honest, I think once the interview process, it should be submitted because if we keep them, we can say, you know what? Give the, another candidate of our liking a little more leverage of points. We may wanna change and that's not a fair process. So, if you turn them in, it wouldn't influence you as much as it would if you held them. So, I would suggest we turn them in, uh, at each conclusion.
Turn them in, but you still, it's too early to gotta...
Just a suggestion for the city, for the permanent position when we get there. I know I'm getting off topic, but, uh, we should be able to have a meeting and each one of us provide specific questions and then we can agree on that at the next meeting. We can just, to, however many, we can just give it each commission.
The city clerk, at this time, would you announce the next applicant?
Yes, Mr. Michael E. Jackson.
It's good evening, good night, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. Really appreciate it. I responded to the application, I think it was Tuesday, and I got word that my uncle passed away in Jamaica on Wednesday. So, outside of that, I would be there in person, but I'm, uh, in Jamaica now taking care of his funeral arrangements. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to join you through Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We're gonna begin by aligning you a presentation that you will present to the commission. And it would be considering your appearance, your professionalism, your delivery, your resume, application and work experience. You have up to fifteen minutes and time starts now. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mayor Bab, members of the commission, the city of Pahokee, for this opportunity. As a reference, my name is Michael Lee Jackson, a lifelong citizen, resident of the Glades community, namely, born in Belle Lake, Florida, and lived in South Bay, Florida, all of my life, except a couple of different times I went off to college. I would like to, again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited about the possibility of being, uh, becoming your interim city manager. Local government started for me back in nineteen ninety-two, where I came home shortly after completing a graduate degree at FAMU. And really looked at how I could have impact in the community. And one of the ways that I felt early on was to, first and foremost, having an opportunity to utilize my degrees in political science and public administration. But I was sorely surprised that there was very few jobs available. So, being, uh, able to make some adjustments. I then became a certified teacher with the Palm Beach County School System. And believe it or not, my first teaching stint started at Pahokee Junior Senior High School, where I thoroughly enjoyed working with some of the pioneers that we know now that walked the halls of, of Pahokee High School. So, I did that for a few years and shortly thereafter, I continued to look at ways on how I could have impact. How, why did I come back to the Glades? I was asked that question over and over and over again. And my response early on and continue to be today, why not? Because the people of the Glades had invested so much into me, uh, from my early career, through my matriculation, through elementary, middle, high school. I knew when I left for Florida A&amp;M University back in nineteen eighty-three that I would come back home and try my very level best to have impact. So, again, that government journey started in nineteen ninety-two when I ran for the city commission in South Bay. And I was successfully, uh, successfully unseated a long-term incumbent at the time. And I went to work right away. I was able to have impact, direct impact by my advocacy and my relatability to the residents, again, that have, had known me for all of my life and, and had entrusted me to lead them. And from that, I served two terms on the commission. And shortly in the middle of my second term, uh, we were in the process of trying to find a city manager. Our city manager took a county manager's position in the neighboring county. And after a round of interviews, no one really panned out. And Mayor at the time, Mayor Anthony, kinda suggested to me, why don't you consider, you're coming to the end of your term, just resigning this last few months and put your hat in the, and see what happens as a result of that. So, I did. I resigned. I think I may have had another month and a half on my second term. And I successfully became the city manager in South Bay. And that really began, um, uh, the, the dream, the opportunity that I really was looking for from a child, to have direct impact. Even as an elected official, you're able to, uh, get certain things done. But from a, create a theoretical framework of, of moving the city forward. But I, I saw in the city manager's position, an opportunity to actually get down, uh, to the nth degree and get things done. And they would do that very successfully. And I fast forward from city government, I, I had a stint of ten-plus years in city government in South Bay. And shortly thereafter, I, uh, said, what else can I do? And I then looked at opportunities through a small consulting firm. So, I resigned from that position as this city manager. It was a resignation, it wasn't a termination, it wasn't a force out. But I gladly, after careful thought, decided to start my own business and give me an opportunity to do some other special things that were kind of limited from the city's aspect. And shortly into that period of developing and forming my consulting company, I was approached by representatives in Broward County and asked if I had any interest in serving as the, um, director for the Broward County, for Broward County's South Florida Water Management District. And I immediately said, no, I don't, I don't wanna do that. And I was reminded, uh, that I shouldn't answer no right away. Give it thought, pray about it and see what, even if it's not my decision, if it's the best decision for people and my ability to continue to help people, which I really believe is my goal in life. So, long story short, I eventually applied for the position, interviewed for it and became the service center director for, of South Florida Water Management District in Broward County. So, after doing that for some years, I went back and got into the consulting business and was able to be very successful as a consultant. I had developed a network, not only in Palm Beach County, but Palm Beach, Broward, Miami-Dade and some of the other counties. And I, I did that for a long time. And, um, I had the political blog again. I'd say, well, why don't I run for a county commission? That may be some opportunities in there to help the Glades region. Or, I ran, was unsuccessful. And it's second to the winner. But the winner saw so much in me during the campaign, he hates. So, for a six-year period, I was responsible for all of the county funds that came to South Bay, Belle Lake and Pahokee. And responsible meaning that each dollar that came to those communities, the administrators, county division leaders, department, making sure that all of those projects in the Glades moved. And I tell you, they did move. I was fortunate enough to come at a time when a major, a lot of major milestones were accomplished during that time and during my time as the, uh, city manager. Over those thirty-two years of government, twenty-eight of those years, I was able to have a hand in either directly or indirectly to some degree in the, uh, major move of the, of the Glades region. And I'll give you a few examples. I was one of the initial inaugural board members for the Glades Utility Authority. As we now know, that Glades Utility Authority became, uh, was able to help direct individual sewer, water and sewer utilities for each individual community. We got to a point in the Glades area where the water from the lake was not a good, treatable source as a water, uh, opportunity, a water supply opportunity for the communities. So, something had to be done. And what was done was the county, we negotiated with the county with, through each city and developed their own individual water and sewer plant and water and sewer services as, as it is today. That was important, but I think something was just as important. I was primarily responsible and had a huge hand into making sure that those city employees that worked in those areas were made whole. They did not lose their jobs, they did not lose their benefits. There were every opportunity presented itself. They were all were consumed by the county. And in most cases, they received higher pay, they received better benefits, and they were put in a position to help their families. And most of those people are still today at the county. Also played a major role in the conversion of the police and fire, public safety. I was in government, local government and county government at the time, where those contracts were negotiated. And we know today that we still have county police and county fire. So much so, not only through the contract process, but I was also a very intricate part in site-selecting the new, uh, fire departments for each community. And that's something I was very proud of as well. And it goes and on, on and on and on. I was on the, the governing board of the hospital when the new hospital was built. I think that was something that was really important as well. When the, uh, one of the things that I was really, I kinda alluded to it a minute ago, was making sure that people that worked in the communities had every opportunity to do just that. I hired or recommended through companies throughout the Glades, the hiring of returning citizens. I personally, uh, along with others in the community, rounded up residents from all three cities, put them on a bus after training and developing resumes and, and application, completing the application. We went around to all of the local businesses, uh, that were hiring. We went to all of the sugar companies, we went to all of the hospitals. And we used that influence and leverage to get people jobs. And I'm even, I'm thankful now, today, some twenty years later, of how I impacted individuals and their families. So, all of these are reasons why I wanna continue to serve people. I wanna continue to help situations in Pahokee. I have kinda kept abreast on, uh, your projects. I know there's some things that I can, uh, bring to the table that will, uh, become meaningful and something that can be very successful. And I, and I'm eager, uh, to be able to do just that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Now, we'll move into the, uh, interview question. The first question is, why do you wanna work in the city of Pahokee? And what we can expect during your first ninety days on the job?
I would like to work for the city of Pahokee because, again, I understand the community. I understand its people. I think that I could be of benefit, uh, by becoming the interim city manager and ultimately, if the opportunity presents itself as the city manager. I've developed relationships, uh, that will serve positive if given the opportunity to work for the city of Pahokee. I met some of my strongest mentors. I've mentioned a minute ago that I started my work career in Pahokee, city of Pahokee. I was able to meet individuals, uh, that I consider very, very strong mentors that had a major impact in my overall professional development. And what better way to repay that or pay, pay that forward by serving in the community that they served in? I, uh, I remember the students at Pahokee Junior High School. I remember how they impacted my life. I was their teacher, but I learned a lot of lessons, uh, just by being there at the school. I developed real strong relationships with the Pahokee Church of God. My late uncle served as a deacon there and also was a sound person there. I'm, I'm a person of faith and I, I don't shy away from that. And I really believe that as, uh, all aspects of the community work together, pray together and put ourselves in a position to hear from, uh, people and hear from, uh, the Lord. And again, I won't hide that. Uh, I think we move better, I think we move faster. So, a lot of things that have been held up, a lot of things that have not transpired that, um, we think, uh, is lifelong resonance that should've happened. I think we're right at the cusp of a lot of things breaking. And I wanna be at the forefront of that, uh, in Pahokee to make sure that becomes a reality.
Thank you. The second, uh, part of that question was, what can we expect in the next ninety days, on your first ninety days?
Um, just learning the processes that you have in place, you know, all municipal government. From a general standpoint, I know you have a, uh, a mayor commission form of government. I come from a commission manager experience, but it's, it's basically the same. But my first sixty, ninety days would be composed of learning the, the, learning the playbook in Pahokee, for lack of a better term, uh, building consensus with staff, learning as much as I can, appreciating, uh, the institutional history that the staff, uh, that you currently have has and see how I could, uh, develop and strengthen. And it's very, very little you can do in sixty, ninety days. But I think, uh, just learning the, the framework of, of the city of Pahokee's system and structure and from a strategic standpoint, uh, see how that can be realized and, uh, work along with that until, uh, hopefully in a position to help develop something that I can present to the commission, uh, beyond those ninety days as a recommendation, uh, moving forward.
Thank you. And we'll go in the same order I have Commissioner McPherson asking the next two questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jackson.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Have you ever had to fire an employee? And if so, what for and what was your process to terminate?
Yes, that's, the short answer is yes. I've, I've had to, over my professional experiences, uh, both at the state level, the county level and the, well, not at the county level, but at the local municipal level, I've, I've had to terminate employees. And I will say that's, um, that, that's been a very, it was a very, very difficult process, realizing that you have impact on a person's ability to earn an income. So, my, what I did, I've, I've pretty much followed, uh, the city's policy as it relates to, uh, personnel policy and human resources policies as it relates to terminating employees. So, I, I have, I've had, had to do that. But I, I will tell you, I think altogether, it may have been six total, if my recollection is correct. And out of that six, my, I was so concerned about, uh, two of the, two of the six couldn't be helped. two of the, two of the six couldn't be helped. But four of the six, it was just a bad fit. But what I was able to do beyond their employment in those situations was to continue to speak with them and encourage them. And ultimately, I helped four of those six find other employment elsewhere.
The next question is, why did you apply, excuse me, why have you applied for the interim city manager position with the City of Pahokee?
I think I can make a change. As a matter of fact, I know I can make positive strides. Again, my commitment to the communities of the Glades is real. It's something that I've committed my life, professional life to. I had ample opportunity to go elsewhere immediately after college. And I turned down opportunities because I knew for a fact that I wanted to come back and helping the Glades. I've done so in South Bay. I've done so to a degree in Belgrade. And now the opportunity in Pahokee is one that will allow me to have a direct touch in all three cities, in all three communities of the Glades. And I'm a strong proponent of regionalism. And oftentimes, that's not suggesting that we can't or we shouldn't maintain our own home rule. But I've found over the years that if you work together and that you plan together as a region, there are more resources available. There are more opportunities to have regional projects successful as opposed to individual projects all the time. It works in ways that other communities throughout Florida and throughout the country have developed and proposed and made some strong success. We have some synergy between all three cities that could invite economic development in a way that we have not in the past. I think a regional approach, the City of Pahokee has a beautiful resource on the lake. There's a connectivity between the City of Pahokee, the City of Belgrade, and the City of South Bay, and further developing opportunities around ecotourism and other projects that will not only help the individual city, but will have a regional impact that will be something that's very successful for all three cities. So that's one of the reasons why I continue to live in the Glades. I continue to believe in the Glades. I continue to hold the flag high when it comes to the Glades. And I think my involvement with the City of Pahokee is timely. I think I've applied in the past and no shade to anyone here, but I didn't even receive a call for an interview. Didn't even receive acknowledgement of an application. But when I applied, that, those times in the past, and when I've applied this time, my, my approach has been the same. If it's God's will, it'll happen. And I know I thank you when I open up for an interview, but I really thank you for an opportunity to come before you tonight and for this commission to hear from me.
Okay, next two questions would be asked by Vice Mayor Mervin.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
The first question is, how much work experience do you have as an interim city manager or in municipal government?
I have no experience as an interim city manager. I have direct city municipal government experience. I have six years of that in South Bay altogether as the manager. And I have an additional four as a member of the commission. But indirectly, and I mentioned a minute ago where I was honored to serve as the service center director for Broward County, that gave me an opportunity to work with all municipalities in Broward County at the time, along with county government. And my involvement with each municipality in Broward gave me opportunity to work directly with city managers, all of the city managers, all of the elected officials. And that is a different type of experience, but I consider it an experience as well. We've worked along, helping develop budgets that were water and water use related. We developed recreational opportunities around the different waterways in Broward County. And that gave me an opportunity to continue to have a municipal fingerprint on a lot of things that were done, not in Palm Beach County at the time, but in Broward County. One of the things that I also was very instrumental in doing was helping them develop their water use permits for municipalities. And I know you do the same in the City of Pahokee. So I have the experience in helping you develop that. I have the experience in helping, as working along with all of the special water districts in Broward County. I've also developed relationships with those water districts in Palm Beach County. So I know when you have issues with canal flow, when there's trash in the canals in Pahokee, when there's tires, or when there are lily pads, I have relationships and I've worked throughout those different processes and making sure that we have funding in place or resources in place or a combination of both. Because it doesn't take money and a budget to do a lot of those things, but developing relationships with companies that currently exist in the communities and those water districts, those special districts can go a long way. And I was able to utilize that quite a bit in other communities and be willing to do, eager to do the same for the City of Pahokee.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more, I'm sorry. How many years of city budget experience do you have?
That's going to be pretty much equal to my answer a minute ago. Altogether, municipal government is ten years. That's a combination of elected and appointed official. And those other communities that I mentioned in Broward County, there's an additional three years of those because, again, I had imprint and footprints on all of those budgets because they were looking for either direct funding for their water systems or golf courses or, you know, secondary, primary and secondary sources of water projects, recreational dollars as well. So they would, they would contact my office and lobby my office for funding for those different projects. So I will include all of those other cities in Broward County for an additional three years. So I collected thirteen to fourteen years.
Thank you.
Okay, the next two questions would be for our Commissioner Derek Bolden on Zoom.
Mayor, is it fair for me to ask you the same two questions I asked the previous candidate?
That'll be fine.
So I heard you, hello, Mr. Jackson. I heard you, you mentioned you also have a company. Is that company related to working with municipalities? And if so, will we be hiring you as an individual or as a company?
To answer your question, yes. And I'm applying as an individual. I continue to do consulting work with municipalities and other agencies and companies to include nonprofit organizations as well.
Okay. And your salary for city manager in your previous position?
My salary for city manager, so we're talking
Your last city manager?
Yeah, my last city manager position. I think it was ninety thousand dollars at the time, eighty-five thousand. Don't quote me on it, but that was, that's years ago, back in two thousand and six, I think it was.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next we'll move to our next Commissioner, Commissioner Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson.
Good evening, Mrs. Commissioner Owen Williams.
What type of leader are you?
I'm a I'm a leader, I lead by example. And that's probably not, you probably won't find that in a leadership book or a leadership packet, but I lead by example. And that merely means that I wouldn't expect anyone, I'm a part of leadership or leading, I wouldn't expect anyone to, I wouldn't expect myself to do anything more than making sure that that person, those people are successful. I lead by example. I provide a template of what I'm expecting. I research. I learn the issues. I learn the curriculum. I understand all of those aspects. And then if I find that a team or an organization is not up to speed in terms of its overall training to get the job done, then I make sure that those people, personnel, systems are trained, trained in a way that will ultimately get the job done. Example, City of Pahokee, I'm not sure how many departments you have now, but it would be my goal to make sure that those department heads are trained in a way that they can perform their jobs and tasks. And how do you know that? There are job descriptions for every department head within the City of Pahokee. I sit down and I said, just be honest with me. What are you lacking? What will it take to get you to perform at an ultimate and maximum capacity? And I would expect some level of honesty, full honesty. And then I would measure that. After the training, I would measure it. And I would maybe know three, six months out, hey, we're not meeting the bar. This is how we're expected to perform for the residents for the City of Pahokee. And I dare not let them down because it's something that we don't know or we're ignorant of, or we don't have the abilities to do it. And I'm very strong on that. Because I think that when you put resources and people together that understand, you get an ultimate result. But if that's not in place, if that's not being practiced, then it just becomes something else to do. And I've been around professionally for a long time. And I'm at a point in my career where I cannot accept mediocrity. And that's not being negative. But I think that a lot of times, when others, especially when others come into our communities in the Glades, I've been told, even by going to restaurants, when I complain about service, I call and I find out what's going on. Why is this being done this way? And people that own those franchises often tell me, well, you in the Glades, what do you expect? It's time for that to stop. We need to change that. And I think by having an informed and focused work product, then we can get that done. I know I went a long way around answering your question, but I am the person, I commit myself to leading by providing an example. So you won't find me not performing at my very highest every day, giving my complete, total best. And do I know everything? Absolutely not. But am I willing to know and learn what's needed and necessary? One hundred percent. And I take my direction from the city commission, the Marion City Commission, and I move in a way that's pleasing to the Marion Commission. Will I make suggestions when I think things can be done a little different or a different approach? Absolutely. But at the end of the day, I work for the commission.
Thank you. My next question is, how many years of experience do you have conducting strategic planning sessions with the commission or council?
Total, I would say eight, eight to ten years collectively. And I've done that through having others to come in. I've done it in a retreat style. I've done others individually, focused sessions. So altogether, eight to ten years collectively.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is the highest number of employees you have had to manage?
I think the highest that I've managed was in South Bay at the time when there were all the departments and divisions were within municipal control. So I would say maybe eighty, ninety at the City of South Bay at the time. Also, I think with the Water Management District, it was a small staff, but we, we had access to the total staff throughout the sixteen county area. So I would say ninety at the most at one time. And it might not be a large number, but it's a challenging number because those ninety people had to work. We had to get a job done. And being in a rural community, managing ninety employees, it's a challenge. Because you've had some people that had dual functions. You had some people that were dependent on to do things when others wouldn't or couldn't. So we made, we made things happen with those ninety employees.
How many years of experience do you have managing city commission or council meetings?
I would say managing directly, six years as a manager and managing and helping with other aspects of municipalities and county. An additional six years doing my stint as a liaison for the Glades communities. Again, where I served under the auspices of the county, most directly the county commissioner for the Glades region. And I worked hand in hand with city staff in Pahokee, Belgrade and South Bay.
And we'll have Commissioner McPherson ask the last question.
Have you ever been disciplined by a current or past commission or council? If so, why?
No, sir. Never. I left on good terms with the commission in South Bay. So I haven't had any challenges in terms of being disciplined.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Let's conclude our interview process with you as the applicant for the interim city manager. We would more than like to be trying to make a decision tonight to at least share that information with the one who's successful in this endeavor. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you again for the opportunity.
At this time, uh, City Clerk, could you announce the next, uh, applicant?
Yes, sir. The next applicant is Ms. Isabel McDonald. She, um, stepped out for a second to grab something from her car, sir.
You can always get the talk.
Hey, Bear, can you tell him to leave me alone?
Go two ways, sir.
Can you tell him to leave me alone? I ain't talking to him now. He said, "That's somebody I can get to talk to." He said that to me. There's just nothing going on back there. I can talk to her. And if I can't talk to her, he can't say nothing to me. Will you please tell him to stop talking to me? Oh, he tried to hand me a piece of paper. I told him, "I don't need him to be nice." So you know I don't need him to talk to me. Please tell him. Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm calm. Ain't, I don't need no kind of discussion with him. And I wish you'd tell him, 'cause he gonna tell you next to tell me to get out. So I'm telling you before we tell you. Tell him to stop messing with me. He tried to hand me a piece of paper. You heard it, seen it? I told him, "I don't need him to be nice to me." You could have answered to him, but I don't need him to do nothing. That's why I'm telling you all to stop before he get there. Ain't that personal?
Ms. Mike, Ms. McDonald, thank you for coming and, uh, joining us for this interview for our interim City Manager position. We're gonna be asking you a series of questions. Each, uh, Commissioner, Mayor, will be asking two questions each. We'll be rating on a scale from one to five, with hi-five being the highest. Uh, we're gonna start the interview off by actually allowing you to do a presentation. Kinda give us a little about your background. Uh, this interview will be looking at appearance, professionalism, delivery, resume, job application, and work experience. You have up to fifteen minutes to provide, provide your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. Um, I'm elated to have this opportunity to appear before you, uh, to interview as a candidate for interim City Manager. Uh, first of all, um, I, I, I mean, I can't even get past the fact that, uh, I'm homegrown. Um, my, my family moved here, uh, when I was four years old. And, uh, thank God, uh, I'm sixty-plus, so. Uh, I love this community, and, um, I'm going to be the change maker here. Um, went to school here, moved away a couple of times, and I could have left and never returned, but, um, I have much love for the City of Pahokee. Uh, upon graduating high school, um, I completed my undergrad studies at Palm Beach State College, um, went on, uh, a few years later, and pursued my, um, Bachelor's of Professional Studies, which is equivalent to Business Administration at Barry University. And I said when I finished that, because of the challenge that it presented, being a single parent and working full-time, that I wasn't gonna do any more schooling. A short time later, I was pursuing my master's degree. Um, initially, I started out in public administration. I completed a complete semester in public administration, um, at the Uni-, uh, Uni-, Nova Southeastern University. So upon completing that first semester, I was like, "No, let me just switch on over to education," which is what I did. Completed my master's degree in mathematics, education. And at the same time, I was already working in the school system while working full-time at the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Uh, being a single parent, sometimes you just gotta do what you gotta do. And so that's what I did. Uh, no reservations or any, um, apprehensions about what it was I had on my plate. I just knew what I had to do, and I positioned myself to be able to do what I needed to do. Um, as time went on, met my husband and got married. We've been, we getting ready to celebrate our twenty-sixth wedding anniversary in a couple of weeks. So I'm just connected to the community, and I'm enlightened by some things these last couple of years after retiring almost two years ago from the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, um, after thirty-five years. Thirty-five years, which I don't know how many of you know how, uh, the corrections environment works, but it's a microcosm of a community. Everything that I would need to be looking at and taking consideration for as a City Manager, I had to do in that jail. And so one of the administrators had to make sure that we had enough people to do what needed to be done, uh, there was enough food, the laundry, sanitation, all of that stuff had to work together so that the facility could run smoothly. And I was one of the individuals responsible for making sure that that happened. Um, after so many years as a supervisor, I think the whole time that I was there, thirty-five years, probably twenty of those years I was in supervision. And I'm one of those individuals. I don't freelance, whatever the policy says, that's what we gonna do. So I think that a lot of times, we, we create issues for ourselves when we step outside of those guidelines. But it's not hard for me. A lot of people would look at you and say, "How can you do it? It's easy. Just do what you told to do." And that's what I'm about. I did that, and I don't have a problem with expecting that from others, nor do I have a problem with compelling them to do what they're told to do. So along that, those, um, lines that I, um, went through, uh, educating myself, several administrative positions that I, um, administrative trainings, I'm sorry, uh, Leadership Palm Beach County, um, Southern Police Institute Administrative Officers Course, um, I'm Law Enforcement Certified and Corrections Certified. Uh, I own my own business here in town, and whatever it is that I gotta do to perform at that level, that is acceptable, not only to myself, to others, I don't have a problem with meeting those requirements. So it's not about doing my thing. It's about doing what's right and what's required. Um, if I'm gonna be serving the city, I wanna hear what the citizens have to say. I'm going to make sure that I'm abreast of the policies and procedures that are in place, and I'm not gonna stop short of making sure that I'm in compliance with those policies and procedures. So the education I have, I've never served in city management, in a city management position, but I can manage this city. Um, if I didn't think that I could, I wouldn't be sitting here. And that's not to throw shade or discount any efforts or abilities that anyone else has. I know what I can do. So it just gives me great pleasure to be able to sit here and to be a candidate to become the City Manager of a place where I grew up. I raised my children here. They went off to college. Um, my daughter is still here. She never left. But I just thank God for this community. I know most of the people here, not all of them, and if I don't know them, they know me because I've been active in the community. Uh, I'm a believer. I don't have a problem with anybody knowing that I'm a believer, and I live the life that's expected of a believer. I'm not perfect by any means, I'll say that. Uh, I don't have a problem with being corrected, contrary to popular belief. Uh, I don't know it all, although I'm told that most of the times. No, I don't know it all, but I know what I know. And whatever I don't know, I'm a quick study. I don't have a problem with opening up the book, going to the training, and doing whatever I need to do to bring myself up to speed and making sure that I can educate myself, and then I'm on to educating someone else. I'm not, knowledge is no good if you don't share it. So whatever I, whatever I know, you can know it too. Uh, the problem that a lot of us have is we're, we have too much pride to ask for help when we need help. And becoming a City Manager, I'm going to make sure that I utilize the resources that I have in place. I know I have people that are, are department heads that have been doing the job that they're doing, and I know that if they're doing it, then they can certainly help me make the transition that I would need to make as the City Manager of Pahokee. So I'm here, and I'm going to be grateful to the Commission and all of the citizens. I certainly would solicit your support as the City Manager of the City of Pahokee. Thank you.
Thank you.
The first question I would like to ask is, why do you wanna be, why do you wanna work for the City of Pahokee? And secondly, what can we expect from you from the first ninety days on the job?
I wanna work for the City of Pahokee because of the ties that I have here, because I grew up here, because of the love that I have for the people that are here, and because I wanna see the city go forward. And so I'm offering my services to make that happen. Um, I'm also interested in being the, uh, City Manager or working for the City of Pahokee because, um, I have the time available right now. And, uh, it's one of the things that I, uh, had considered even before I retired from the Sheriff's Office. Um, several times I put in my application. Uh, this is the fourth. And so I think that timing is everything, and I'm looking forward to this opportunity. So, uh, I'm one of those people that love a challenge. Uh, I'm gonna get up early and stay up late. Whenever the need arises, I'm going to arise to the occasion. Um, those, the people that I've worked with over the years, um, they're looking for me when they come to work, 'cause they know I'm gonna be the one to get it done. And so I'm not trying to be boastful or to stick my chest out, but, uh, I like to say all the time that they look at me as one of those individuals that everybody's going to be quiet, 'cause they wanna hear what I gotta say. And, uh, like I said, I'm not being boastful. Ask anybody that has worked with me, they can tell you that, uh, they wanna be on duty when I'm working. And like I said, I'm not trying to be boastful or to, you know, use any type of scare tactics, but, uh, I'm one of those leaders that I'm gonna hold myself accountable. And I don't have a problem with being held accountable by other entities or individuals or factions that need to hold me accountable. Uh, we are only going to, uh, accomplish what we can accomplish together. And so I'm here looking for that opportunity, and I'm gonna make the best of it. And, uh, what was the other part of the question? I'm sorry.
What can we expect on your first ninety days on the job?
The first ninety days, I would, um, take advantage of the opportunity to meet with my department heads, to find out where they are and where they need to be, and come up with a, a plan with each one of them to, um, accomplish the goals that we need to set to make sure that we are operating in the black and not in the red. And that's not necessarily talking about money. Um, whatever it is that we suppo- Whatever it is that we supposed to be doing as a department, that's what we gonna do. If there are any deficiencies, let's figure out what they are and let's come up with a game plan so that we can get to where we need to be as departments. And if anyone is failing, then I'm failing. So we all gonna work together as a team to make sure that we can get done what needs to be done as a city.
Have you ever, excuse me. Have you ever had to fire an employee? If so, what for and what was your process to terminate?
I haven't had to fire anyone directly, but being an administrator, I certainly participated in the investigative process and was able, was obligated to find the facts in a situation and make recommendations with regards to what policy was violated and also to determine whether or not there was any need for discipline. So being involved in that process, again, I didn't have to fire anyone directly, but I certainly was part of the investigative process and don't have a problem with identifying the policies and procedures, if any, that were violated and making recommendations with regards to the actions that need to be taken to rectify the situation.
Why did you apply for the interim city manager position with the city of Pahokee?
Again, I'm homegrown and I've been following the process of what's been going on here in the city for some time. For a long time, I didn't get involved because I was so busy doing other things. But a couple of years ago, like I said, coming up May 31st is gonna be two years that I retired from that job that I enjoyed so much. Never woke up one day and said, I wish I ain't have to go. I never called out sick in thirty-five years. So I just wanna see things change for the better. And again, I'm gonna be that one to come in and make a difference for the community, for the city itself, for the employees, for everything that has anything to do with the growth of Pahokee. I'm gonna be that catalyst to come in and make it happen. And I'm not saying it's gonna happen overnight, but I'm gonna work tirelessly to make sure that every effort that I can extend is devoted to the growth and the forward progress of Pahokee.
The next two questions will be Vice Mayor Mervin.
How you doing, Ms. McDonald?
I'm fine. How are you?
The first question is, how much work experience do you have as an interim city manager or in municipal government?
Zero. Aside from the fact that, as I said earlier, I worked in a microcosm of a community, which was the county jail, which, like I said, everything that we have to get done in the city of Pahokee amongst citizens that are free, those same services were required to take care of those individuals that were not free or incarcerated. So we gotta make sure that the food arrives on time. You gotta make sure that the trash is taken out. You gotta make sure that medical is in place. You gotta make sure that security and safety is in effect. It's just one of those cities that's confined to four walls. And I did it well for thirty-five years and I believe that I can do the same thing. Take those experiences and, and apply them to the city of Pahokee with individuals that are free and get them to step up and to buy in to what it is we need to be doing as a city so that we can grow together and so that we can move forward together so that we can make sure that the needs of our citizens are met. And I'm just up for the challenge.
Thank you. The next question is, how many years of city budget experience do you have?
No city budget, budget experience, but I did have, again, as an administrator, access and was able to contribute to putting together the budget of the department where I was assigned. And so I'm very familiar with making sure that I look at the needs that we have and ensuring that money and other funds are spent the way that they need to be spent and also identifying upcoming needs, planning for the short term as well as the long term. And I understand that it's gonna be a little bit of a transition, but again, I'm a quick study. I can certainly get in there and get on the right track in a short period of time utilizing the resources that I have in place, such as my department heads and everyone else that is available and does what they, do what they do to ensure that the city is doing the things that need to be done with the funds that are provided to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Commissioner Bowden asks two questions.
Mayor Bab, my, the two questions asked to the previous candidates were based on their experience already being, you know, already operating in that capacity. I do have two, two other prepared questions. Or otherwise, I can give my two questions to another one of the council, another one of the council members to ask additional questions. Whichever you, whichever you would allow, sir.
I have no problem with asking your own two questions. We'll try to filter in the other questions.
You mentioned having an understanding of the political climate in the city of Pahokee. My question is, how do you plan to maintain impartiality and professionalism in decision-making? That's question one.
Say that again.
I said, I know that you're aware with the current political climate in the city of Pahokee. You mentioned kind of paying attention to what's been going on over the past couple of years. The question is, how do you plan to maintain impartiality and professionalism in decision-making? As a city manager?
I don't bring friends to work. I spent thirty-five years, and I'ma keep saying that 'cause it's the truth and I don't know what else to say, at the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office and I had some really close friends there. At one point, we even participated in a carpool, some of us together. But I never shared with them my responsibilities because number one, I didn't want them to think that they could sway me. And number two, I didn't wanna have to let them know that, you know, hey, you, you gonna get it when everybody else get it. You know, I'm not giving, it's gonna, it's gonna be a fair playing field and I'm not gonna give anybody an unfair advantage. And I know a lot of times people look at you and they, they don't understand that. But that's me. You know, I, I can be fair like that. And if the friends don't understand that, then they not your true friends. Because when you got a job in this particular type arena, you gotta know how to draw that line and not cross it. And when I say that I don't bring friends to work, I don't. You can be my next door neighbor, we can be the tightest of friends. But when we get to work, we at work. And so that's the kinda person that I am and I'm able to make decisions and stand on those standards, those very standards. If you break the rule, you gonna, you gonna have to suffer the consequences. Ask either one of my children, they'll tell you, I don't play. And I'm not just trying to, you know, this ain't just, this me, this is me. So I had to remind my grandchild recently, boy, you better ask your mama about me. I don't play. And I'm just not trying to be a gorilla or anything. This is me, so I don't know how to be anything else. I'm just keeping it real.
All right. My second question. With all of the changes happening in the city of Pahokee, it can definitely have a, a negative impact on the morale of city staff. My question would be, what strategies would you implement to improve the morale and productivity among city employees who may feel demoralized or disenfranchised?
I think that the biggest problem with a decrease in morale is it comes when people don't know. And I believe in making notifications and disclosures before it gets to the point to where people are ready to pull their hair out. I'm one of those ones, I'ma step to them on a daily basis and find out what's going on. And if it's anything that needs to be addressed right then and there, we gonna strategize and come up with a solution for it. I'm gonna be receptive to any concerns that they have and I, I just know that together, we can get things worked out. And those that are having the issues, they can come and talk to me about it. I don't know everything, but I know where to go for reference when there's a question that I'm not able to answer. So we gonna have some growing pains sometimes. And those are, those are the times that you really can just pull it together and encourage everybody to, hey, let's, we in it together, so let's, let's work it out together. So that, that's my take on that particular aspect.
Thank you.
Now we have the next two questions asked by Commissioner Williams.
Good evening, Ms. McDonald.
Good evening.
My first question is, what type of leader are you?
I was trying so hard not to say that in the last response, but I do believe that as leaders, no matter what type you relate to, I, I think I'm a transformational leader. It comes a time when you have to make changes and not just be stuck in one place when it comes to getting things done. But I, I like to make sure that we're making those adjustments whenever the situations arise and not be stuck in the past because we feel like, oh, we did it this way, so we can't do it a different way whenever the situation repeats itself. So I think I'm a transformational leader and I'm gonna take into consideration what's going on at the current time and make sure that we are making the right decision regarding the current situation as opposed to what we did before. Now that's not to say that I'm gonna be up and down and all around when it comes to making a decision about something. I know that we have a policy in place and we wanna follow our policies. Whenever you discard the policy, you rewrote it. If you're not following it, then you're gonna have some issues. So I realize that the circumstances might require us to do things differently. But for the most part, we gonna make sure that we are following the policy, following the policies that are on, on the books. And if for whatever reason, we can't follow that policy, then we gonna have it reviewed and we gonna modify that policy so that it fits the needs that we have as a particular municipality at that particular time. So I hope that answered your question.
All right. My second question is, how many years of experience do you have conducting strategic planning sessions with commission or councils?
I don't have any experience conducting strategic planning with commissions or council. But as an administrator in the county jail, I was a part of that very integral process for over twenty years as a supervisor. And we regularly reviewed our policies and made adjustments as needed. Annually, as you all know, we all prepare for the hurricane season, which comes every year, June 1st. So before that time, we all had to meet and make sure that everything was up to par with regards to the plans that we have in place when it comes to response, like making sure that we have a contingency in place to make sure that there's enough food, that there's enough medical, that there's care for those who are disabled and unable to move around as freely as others, making sure that the security and the safety is intact. So strategically, you gotta be doing that on a daily basis. But it comes a time once a year when we are preparing for hurricane season that you make sure that those policies are up to par and that those things that need to be done to ensure the safety and security of our community are up to par. So we would definitely make sure that everyone is taking part in making a contribution to ensure that we are safe, secure, and that we can take care of the needs of our people during an emergency situation, not just hurricane season. We have to have contingencies being placed for every type of emergency that may arise. So the planning is the ongoing thing. It's, it's really a daily thing. But for sure, those times of the year when we know that we are going to have situations that require us to make changes to the processes that we have in place, I've been strategically involved in that.
What is the highest number of employees you have had to manage?
As an administrator, I believe around two hundred and forty I've had to manage.
How many years' experience do you have managing city commissions or council meetings?
None.
And the last question will be asked by Commissioner McPherson.
Have you ever been disciplined by current or past commission or council? Or if so, why?
No.
Okay, Ms. McDonald, that concludes your interview. Thank you for coming and we wish you luck and we will be debating whether or not we would make our final decision tonight after all the applicant has been interviewed. So again, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
I'm not wondering, but seeing our goal is to make one tonight, but we gotta go through all the interviews. Could be two or three o'clock in the morning. I don't know how long it gonna take, but hopefully we will. I'll put it that way. Hopefully we will. But hopefully we will, I'll put it that way, hopefully we will. City Clerk Nix, would you introduce, uh, present the next applicant?
Yes, sir. The next applicant is Ms. Carmen Davis.
Good evening, Ms. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Welcome to the City of Pahokee by Zoom. Thank you for participating in this interview process for the vacant interim city manager position. Uh, what we'll be doing this afternoon, we have a, uh, series of questions we'll be asking you. Uh, our five commission, including the mayor, will ask two questions each. Uh, we're gonna first start off the process by aligning you to do a presentation. Just give us some of your background, some of your interests. Uh, we're gonna be looking at your, your appearance, your professionalism, your delivery, your resume, your application, and your work experience. So you have up to fifteen minutes to complete that process. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. First, I wanna give appreciation to you, Mayor Bedd, and the, the commission for this opportunity to interview for the interim city manager's position. Again, my name is Carmen Davis. A little background about myself, I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan, born and raised. Uh, I've been married thirty years, um, celebrates, well, be celebrating thirty years at the end of this month. And, uh, my husband is a retired educator and a minister. Uh, we relocated from, um, Jackson, Mississippi to here due to the fact that my husband is originally from Florida, born and raised in Miami, graduate of FAMU. So we made it a conscious decision to move to South Florida area. So, so I really enjoyed it and, and, and enjoyed Florida very much and has been part of Florida for, for some time now through the years in being married to a Floridian. A little bit about my background, um, I have a bachelor's in urban planning from Wayne State University in Detroit, Michigan, as well as a master's of, of business at Wayne State University as well. I started my public service career working for the City of Detroit as a city planner for ten years, working for the city council and city planning commission. As a planner, I worked on a number of residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. I also authored a number of zoning ordinances, text, and map amendments as well, working with community groups to ensure that developments, the, the different developments did not negatively affect their communities. In my career with the City of Detroit, that's where I just really realized I had the passion for public service and working for the community. And, um, so therefore, I, um, I'm so pleased to be in the, in the, uh, public service arena. After the ten years working for the City of Detroit, we relo- relocated to Mississippi. And there in two thousand nine, I, uh, that's where we relocated, and I began my position as county administrator for Heinz County, Mississippi. Heinz County, Mississippi is the largest county in the state of Mississippi and home of the state capital, Jackson, Mississippi. Uh, the population there is about two hundred and fifty thousand residents in the county. The county is partially rural and urban. Um, I managed over, uh, four hundred direct employees. However, we had a central personnel system where, uh, we had a total of nine hundred employees with the county. The other five hundred employees were connected to the sheriff's department and other constitutional, uh, elected officers. Uh, in Mississippi, uh, as county administrator, I, I started during the recession. And during the recession, uh, needless to say, most communities were having financial challenges. And at the time, uh, one of the wonderful things that my team and I achieved was that at, when I started there, we would, would have a fund balance at the end of the year of about twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, through, uh, tightening up the budget, also renegotiating, uh, vendor contract prices, we were, we were able to achieve savings of about a million dollars. And within the three years of being there, we were able to achieve three point five million dollars to roll into our emergency fund. And so that was a wonderful achievement that our team, uh, uh, accomplished at the time of the county. Uh, as I mentioned also, um, I managed over thirteen department heads as well, and, um, we were able to, excuse me, my microphone got a little dry there. Uh, in managing the thirteen employees, uh, of direct reports, we were able to achieve other, uh, major things. One, we were able to, uh, upgrade our IT system that was antiquated at the time and was, uh, very low speed, that we could not accomplish the efficiencies in providing quality service to our residents uh, after negotiating prices and moving to a provider that was able to provide us a speed that was over a hundred times what we had at a lower price. So one of the, 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 the main, uh, aspects that I wanna share with you that I'm a person that loves to negotiate in making sure that we are cost efficient and we were able to provide, uh, services at a low cost to our residents because I'm very budget conscious and believe that the tax dollars of the public must be reviewed carefully and, and must have careful stewardship of the, the funding that, that, that the community trusts us to manage. Uh, after working for this county of Heinz, I then worked for a nonprofit called the Jackson Medical Mall Foundation. And the Medical Mall Foundation is a, uh, it was a former, former, uh, retail mall of nine hundred square, nine hundred thousand square feet. And there I was the chief operating officer. And I managed, uh, several departments, um, transportation, maintenance, environmental services, IT, security, and others to, uh, make sure that we had a continuity of services that would provide, um, quality, uh, envi- a quality environment for our medical providers. The mall was a combination of medical services as well as retail. We had a community development arm connected to the project where we had, uh, retail outlets, um, grocery store, and other retail shopping where it is... And, and, and a little background about the Jackson Medical Mall, it was a, um, nonprofit that provide healthcare services to the underserved in the city of Jackson. And so, um, the whole point was to empower the community to provide entrepreneurship for, uh, others in the community to start businesses as well. So it was also considered a, a business incubator, uh, in the community. And following Jackson Medical Mall, that, that's when I relocated to Florida, and I was the city manager for Lake Worth Beach, uh, for two years. And during that time, uh, I managed, uh, ten departments. Uh, Lake Worth Beach is, uh, a city of four hundred employees, forty-two thousand population, and also a full-service community where we had our own water and electric utility departments. And the City of Lake Worth Beach, what, uh, I, I'm proud about with the team, we were able to accomplish collaboration with our community partners to provide services at a low cost to our community. So, um, but as I said earlier, I find ways to provide services at a low cost. And what we were able to do, in some cases, we were able to collaborate with our community pa- partners to provide services. For instance, with my relationship, uh, with, um, our state officials and federal officials, we were able to provide funding for affordable housing. Uh, we worked with Congresswoman, Lois Franco. We were, we received seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funding to, to leverage our two point five million dollars for affordable housing. And some of the other needs we had in, in, in our community, we needed a, an employee to help with some of our programs, like, uh, forming a beautification program, also, uh, working with our commissioners to carry out some of their, uh, priorities. I was able to work with, uh, in my, with my relationship with the National Forum of, of Public, Black Public Administrators to, uh, be granted, uh, an AmeriCorps employee, a member, to work for our staff, as a member of our staff, but with no cost. So that's another example of how I was able to bring forth, uh, resources to the community in order to bring quality of life, um, efforts to our community. And I do wanna say, um, with applying for this position, I certainly wanted to bring forward my, my ability to bring stability and, and assist with managing a team to move forward on your priorities. Um, with the city of, I'm sorry, with the county of Heinz, I did wanna say that I was the longest-tenured county administrator of almost ten years, and also the first woman, uh, county administrator for Heinz County, Mississippi. And again, also, I was the first black city manager for the City of Lake Worth Beach. Uh, another aspect about myself, I believe in professional management, and I believe in honing in my, and sharpening my management skills. And so I'm very involved with the, with the ICMA, the International City Managers Association. I'm very involved with the Local City Managers Association, um, with the Palm Beach County City Manager Association. And I'm also part of the Florida City County Managers Association. And as I said earlier, I'm a member of the National Forum of Black Public Administrators. I'm actually a board member, and I also participated as a mentor in the program. So, um, that is my other trait that I believe in professional development and also sharing my skill sets to, um, enrich and, uh, give back to others.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Why do you wanna work for the City of Pahokee? And the other half of that question is, what can we expect on your first ninety days on the job?
Okay, uh, why I wanna work for the City of Pahokee? One, um, I'm currently seeking, uh, an opportunity to serve another community. And so when I heard that you were quickly looking for interim city manager, I, I felt this was the time that I could assist in, in helping you move forward while you're searching for your new city manager. Also, as a, uh, city manager, I wanted to, um, help the community. As I said earlier, I have a passion for assisting the community. I have a passion for bringing stability. And, um, in my reviewing your, uh, me- meetings and, um, some of the issues that you're, um, uh, embarking on now, I do understand that you have a number of vacancies, uh, in your organizations, such as the, um, HR position, as well as the, um, uh, I'm sorry, the finance director position. And so, um, I am used to working with staff to make sure that the job is done, to provide assistance, and also to bring stability while you're taking your time to make the right decision for the next city manager. And, and for the ni- first ninety days, the first thing I would do is, of course, sit down with each one of you, uh, to just, to find out what are your top priorities during this interim time? What are your expectations? And what are the challenges and issues you would like for me to focus on during that time? And how would you like to be communicated with? Uh, how, how often do you wanna communicate? And how would you like to be notified on very pressing issues? Uh, the next thing I would do was also meet with the, the leadership team, finding out what are their issues, what are their concerns, what are their goals and objectives? Uh, how can I support them in what they're doing? And what are their needs and resources they, uh, are required to have in order to get the job done while you're in this interim stage? Uh, so those are some of the things that I would do. And in addition, as we approach hurricane season, we do know that, um, that is approaching and upon us, and making sure I meet with the emergency team who's responsible for, uh, ensuring that we're prepared for those, that, that this season coming up for hurricane season, and, um, making sure that we're all prepared and everyone's in place to do what we need to do to, um, be able, be able to activate should we need to. Heaven forbid, we won't have to do that, but you need to be prepared. And, um, within ninety days, uh, we're approaching budget season. So I will get with the, the team, particularly the finance, the interim finance director, to find out where we stand in setting the calendar for the process and dig in and engage in preparing a balanced budget for the commission and the city.
Thank you. The next two questions will be asked by Commissioner Mike Fearsen.
Yes. Have you ever had to fire an employee? If so, what for, and what was your process to terminate?
Well, as county administrator and city manager, unfortunately, yes. It's not an easy thing to do, and it's not something we wanna do, but sometimes it's necessary. As county administrator, I was responsible for the final sign-off of all personnel transactions, including firing. So indirectly, uh, as, uh, the leader of the, uh, administrative staff, I had to sign off on all terminations. Uh, however, when I review those terminations, I will make sure that we're lined up with the policy. I always try to understand what, what was the circumstances? And are we, uh, lining up with policies? And if we're, if we're meeting those policies, are we exercising areas where we can give a person an opportunity to correct themselves, if possible? And if there's any way possible, I like to give a person a second chance and, and the opportunity to correct themselves. And if they do so, we move on. However, if that second chance does not warrant us to continue the service of that person, unfortunately, we have to make that tough decision to let them go. Um, as, uh, also, in my capacity as a county administrator and city manager, I would have direct firing opportunities, unfortunately, because, uh, um, the director's reporting directly to the city manager. And under that circumstance, uh, I've had a, a director who, who, uh, I received a lot of complaints about the environment in which they worked in. And so, um, of course, in that process, I spoke with the, that director to get an understanding of what was happening, took that person's side of the story, and then I investigated and looked into, uh, uh, the issue by contacting the, the other employees of that department and getting their concerns and getting their understanding of the situation. their concerns and getting their understanding of the situation so that I can make a decision on what needed to be done. Unfortunately, I had to take the tough decision to let that person go. But even with that, as, you know, we know that it's tough for people to continue their careers in this, in public service environment, I even gave that person an opportunity to either resign or they will have to be terminated. In most cases, they will take the opportunity to resign.
Why did you apply for the interim city manager position with the city of Pahokee?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat the question?
Why did you apply for the interim city manager position with the city of Pahokee?
As I said before, I am looking for a new opportunity to serve a community, and this position came up. I felt like I was a good fit because I do understand the rural aspect of a community as I served the city of Heinz County, Mississippi, that was partially rural and also urban. And I do understand that the urban and rural areas have two different, unique needs, and I feel like I'm, I feel comfortable working in a rural area. I feel comfortable working with a community that is unique, and I feel like that I had the skill sets and background to help. I know that you all have and desire more development. I know that you're working on projects such as a couple of housing developments, and with my urban planning background, I can assist in ensuring that those projects are moving smoothly and that they are moving to your satisfaction as far as how it fits within the city of Pahokee. So those are some of my main reasons. And like I said, mainly with the passion of serving the community. And it's in Palm Beach County. I'm a resident of Palm Beach County. I live nearby, and I feel like that this is my community.
At this time, we'll have Vice Mayor Clara Mervin.
Good evening, Ms. Davis.
Good evening.
My question is, how much work experience do you have as an interim city manager or in municipal government?
I have a total of 12 years in municipal government as a city manager. Or a county administrator, which is the same as a manager. County management as well as city management, 12 years total.
Next question is, how many years of city budget experience do you have?
A total of 12 years as far as local government, as a local government manager. But working for the city of Detroit, if you add my time with the city of Detroit for 10 years, it'll be a total of 22 years. With the city of Detroit, as working for the city council, we were responsible for reviewing the budget that the mayor submitted. The city of Detroit, as you may know, is a strong mayor government. And so the mayor would have to submit the budget to city council, and the city council members will review it. As a staff person for city council, I was responsible for analyzing the budget that will submit, or aspects of the budget that was submitted to city council. So over 22 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next two questions will be asked by our Commissioner Derek Bolden, who's on Zoom along with you.
Hello, Mrs. Davis.
Hello, Commissioner Bolden.
Okay, I'm gonna have to do this one a little different. I know you, I know you said you like to negotiate.
Yes, I do.
And I didn't get a chance to take a look, of course, I know it's public record, but I wanted to know your, what was your salary at Lake Worth?
My last salary at Lake Worth Beach was $212,000.
I remember now, you said you wanted to negotiate.
Yes, and I know where you're going with that.
No, no, no.
No, 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 I do want to say, I do want to say that I do understand that that salary may be higher for the city of Pahokee. I am walking in without knowing what the salary range is, but I do recognize the difference of the two communities and the different budgets of the two communities. So everything's negotiable.
And my next question was, in situations where, you know, let me, let me take it back because I want to try to ask you the same question. Okay, so what strategies would you implement to improve morale and productivity among city employees who may feel demoralized or disenfranchised from the changes?
Yes, 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 I do understand that. What I would do to help the morale, I would, one, have an open-door policy. I always have an open-door policy to give employees and staff and team members the opportunity to share their concerns, voice their issues, and also be able to just vent. Because I know, working in this type of environment, you just need a listening ear to understand. So I will have an open-door policy. I will also meet with, with the team, particularly the leaders, as well as make myself available to the team by visiting the different departments and making myself seen and showing that I am available, that I am approachable, to share their thoughts and ideas. Also, I will listen to those concerns and see what I can do to address it. Because sometimes they may have some, some issues that they may have been experiencing during the transition, and they may have some good ideas for me to address in order to make sure that everyone feels that they're working in a healthy environment, environment that is nurturing and that is open to their needs. As a city manager, I feel like that I am in a position to provide the resources, to make sure I have the resources, so that they feel like that they, the work that they're doing is impactful for them and also productive and, and meeting their needs to carry out their roles.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next two questions will be asked by Commissioner Williams.
Good evening, Ms. Davis. My first question is, what type of leader are you?
What type of leader am I? I will say that I'm a servant leader. Pretty much kind of what I said just a moment ago. I believe that as a servant leader, I'm here to serve. I'm here to serve the community. I'm here to serve the commission, and I'm here to serve the employees. And so with that, as I said before, I believe that my responsibility is to make sure that the team has the resources that they need to carry out their roles, and also to make sure that they receive the training, the development that's needed for them to enrich themselves, to be productive, for, not only for their professional enrichment, but also for, to better serve the community that we're serving. I am collaborating, I have a collaborating style, also a coaching style. Because I believe that everyone should have the training that they need and the professional development that they need. I encourage my staff to be involved in the professional organizations that are associated with their area of expertise. I believe in a team-led approach to solutions and, and issues that we deal with. I am just one person. I, I don't see myself as an expert at everything. I believe the department heads or the senior leadership team, they're the subject matter experts. So I rely on them to work together as a team, and we come together and collaborate on how we're going to approach a challenge or how we're going to bring solutions and ideas to improve the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, my next question is, how many years of experience do you have conducting strategic planning sessions with city commissions or the council?
Total 12 years, same amount involved in my local government management experience. I've worked with, when I worked with the county of Heinz as the county administrator or manager, I, every year, we work through our strategic priorities because we lined our priorities with our budget. So I would work with my board of supervisors, those are the county elected officials, they call them board of supervisors in the state of Mississippi. So I work with my board of supervisors to annually go through our priorities and determine what are the needs for that, that year. We also had a three-year strategic plan that we come up with to make a long-term goal, objectives, and, and plans, so that we know that we are moving along some of our projects and making sure we meet the needs of the community. Same with the city of Lake Worth Beach. We also came up with a strategic priorities plan, which was a three-year plan to focus on our efforts to make sure that the priorities of the city is, are moving forward, and also that we're on target and we don't lose focus on how we move forward to accomplish our goals.
Thank you.
What is the highest number of employees you have managed?
The highest number of employees that I manage for the county of Heinz, there were a total of 900 employees. I had 13 direct department heads that reported directly to me. For the city of Lake Worth Beach, we had a total of 400 employees, and I had a total of 10 department heads that reported to me.
How many years of experience do you have managing commission or council meetings?
A total of 12 years. With the county of Heinz, I was responsible as county administrator to forming the agenda, making sure the agenda items are in line to these, the issues and priorities of the board of supervisors. Also made sure that the materials, the backup materials were provided with each agenda item. I reviewed all the agenda items to make sure that the reports were accurate, that it covered the issues that, and information that the commission, not the commission, the board of supervisors needed in order to make an informed decision. And likewise, I did that with the city of Lake Worth Beach. I was directly responsible for reviewing all reports prior to them going to the commission, as well as forming the agenda. I also worked very closely with the elected officials to make sure I know what items they wanted on the agenda and making sure they were on the agenda when, when needed.
Thank you. Last question would be asked by Commissioner Mike Fiersen.
Have you ever been disciplined by a current or past commission or council? If so, why?
No, I've never been disciplined.
Okay, Ms. Davis, thank you so much for participating in this process with us. We hope to make a decision hopefully tonight, if not very soon after. Again, thank you.
Again, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to hearing from you. Good night.
Good night. City Clerk, who's our next applicant? And if you would, you can invite him up.
Ms. Johnellen Adams?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner.
Good evening. Ms. Adams, I know you're not a stranger, but again, thank you for taking the opportunity to apply for the interim city manager position. What we'll be doing tonight is asking you a series of questions. We have a total of 11 questions. They're going to be rated from one to five, with five meaning the highest score, the maximum score. If you did a perfect interview and got all five of the, all 11 of the five, all 11 of the questions, you could score a maximum total of 55 points. So without further delay, what we'll be doing now is giving you the opportunity to do a presentation before the commission. We'll be looking at your delivery, your appearance, your professionalism, your resume, your job application, and your work experience. At this point, you can tell us about any of those items you'd like for us to know about at this point. And you have up to 15 minutes maximum for this question. You may begin.
All right. I am currently with the city of Pahokee.
I am currently with the city of Pahokee. I am the Director of Community and Economic Development for the city of Pahokee. I started in 2016 with the city of Pahokee. I have been the interim city manager twice. I have been the deputy city manager as well as, when I served as the interim, I was also Director of Community and Economic Development. I have extensive knowledge of the city. I have firsthand experience, hands-on, handling all of the projects that the city has in place from Barfield Highway to East Lake Stormwater Improvement to Glade Citizens Villa. I have direct contact and day-to-day experience with staff. I work closely with each and every department, from Public Works to Cemetery, to the city clerk, to the city manager, to Parks and Recs. My office is actually located in Parks and Recs building. I have also had firsthand experience dealing with the algae blooms that everyone knows that during springtime, it gets hot. And I have had the opportunity to tackle the issue, which started, it started in 2017, it got really bad. 21, when I was the interim, I had to jump in and we had to find a way to solve those issues. I have actually, when I was interim city manager the first time, the first day of being interim, I had a fire to deal with. There was a fire outside of City Hall and we had a fire that we had to deal with that knocked out all of our lights and the internet. So I have a lot of experience, hands-on, dealing with the residents, communicating with the residents, sitting on the diocese, working with commission, doing the events for the city, each, every single event that the city has that runs out of Community and Economic Development Department, as well as zoning issues, oversee building planning and zoning, which also means code enforcement. So my experience with the city has been over seven years. I have left twice. The first time that I resigned from the city, it was due to health issues and taking care of my parents. And the second time, we had a new commission and they felt they wanted to go in a different direction. But I came back as the interim. So with that being said, I have seen a lot of changes, a lot of challenges that we continue to have. I have had firsthand experience with walking us through the legislative process, legislative allocations, the budget. So I have had, as I said, firsthand, in-depth experience with the city. I also have a background in behavioral science where I have worked with not-for-profits. I've done development with, I'm sorry, with not-for-profits. I've worked for the TED Center as a business incubator manager, which came in handy with the city, been over economic development. So I, and I'm a native of Palm Beach County, so grew up here, gone off to school, Fort Valley State, and then I transferred to Allen University and came back home. I've lived in several other cities, but I came back home to Palm Beach County and Pahokee is home away from home. Even though I don't live in the city, I think I spend more time in the city than I actually do at my own home. So I hope I was able to answer.
Thank you. Next question is, why do you want to work for the city of Pahokee? And secondly, what can we expect on your first 90 days on the job?
Well, since I already worked for the city of Pahokee and have been working here since 2016, the first 90 days have been continuous 90 days. I, with everything that I do each and every day, I will not give you promises of what will happen. I have firsthand experience of being the interim, working with both city managers, from Mr. Lucas to Mr. Williamson, to knowing that tomorrow when I wake up, I know what needs to be done. No one has to show me, no one has to tell me, no one has to, if there is an issue on Barfield Highway, I have a progress meeting in the morning. So I know that Barfield Highway has dips and humps in it that should not be there. That meeting has already been scheduled to have FDOT site inspector to walk with us tomorrow. I'm actually on jury duty, but scheduled to walk Barfield Highway tomorrow so that we can conquer whatever issue we have with our contractor. Reimbursements have to be done. We're in the midst of doing three audits right now, from our, the marina with the state, to our annual audit for FY '23, and also the OIG. So what I give you, the first 90 days, will be handling the issues that's already going on. And since that process is taking place, we're already in the midst of it. And the plan is to, our finance department is already working on our budget, so they've started the process. Hopefully, if I become interim, when I become interim, we will have a strategic planning meeting scheduled for June so that when our October year starts, we're already moving forward and there are no hiccups and delays. There is no getting anyone acclimated. We are already in place, staff is already in place, whatever adjustments need to be done, we're already mindful of those adjustments that need to be done. We've already started looking at internal controls that we have to put into place so that we can be able to move forward. So there will not be a lag of taking that time to get someone else acclimated or skilled to where they need to be.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Commissioner Mike Fierson provide two questions for you.
Have you ever had to fire an employee? If so, what for? And what was your process to terminate?
Yes, when I served as interim city manager, the first time, I believe that was years of running together, 21. We had an employee who worked in finance department and she did not pay the water bill on time and she tried to blame another staff person. And so we, finance director and myself, we spoke with the staff person, we called them into the office, into HR, we sat down, we had a conversation. We, I had already had a conversation with the finance director as well as the other staff who was training that new staff person to make sure documentation, everything had been done that needed to be done. And they showed us where the lag was and what did not happen. And so I immediately determined that this person was not the right fit and we need to terminate.
Why did you apply for the interim city manager position with the city of Pahokee?
I applied for the interim city manager position because I know that our city needs to move forward. I know that if Mr. Lucas, his last day will be May the 11th, that we don't have that lag in time that we can afford. As I stated before, we have three audits that are currently taking place, not in the process of what's to come. I know that we have legislative priorities that we need to set legislative allocations, we need to go ahead and get those things moving forward. I know that we do not have a, I'm sorry, a lobbyist. And that's one thing that we need so that we will not continue to be behind. So the things that we need to continue to move forward with, that's why I felt that I was the best person to be able to apply for the interim city manager, city manager position to continue with moving us forward where we need to be.
This time, we'll have Vice Mayor Marvin provide two questions for you.
Good evening, Ms. Adams.
Good evening.
Okay, my first question is, how much work experience do you have as interim city manager or in municipal government field?
As I stated, I have been with the city for, since 2016. I have served as interim city manager twice, beginning, I think it's March of 21. I served for, until Mr. Lucas was hired as the interim, and that was in June, I'm sorry, the dates kind of escaped me, but in June. And then he was terminated, I was terminated. We were replaced by another interim city manager. Then in August, no, I'm sorry, then in March of '22, I came back in as interim city manager and served until Mr. Lucas came back in April. And then I served as deputy city manager as well as Director of Community and Economic Development.
Next question, how many years of city budget experience do you have?
So I, overall, I have a total of, since 2016, making sure that I oversaw community and economic development budget and then serving as interim city manager in both capacities and deputy, as well as I assist in handling some of finance things for them. For example, with the dis cert tax, I do dis cert tax, I get that submitted to the Florida League of Cities. I assist with the budget, I assist with making sure that the CIFA, there's something called the CIFA report that we do in order to ensure that our audit is done correctly. So I get that done. I oversee the grant, so I'm very, very knowledgeable about the budget process.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have our city manager, Derek Bowden, provide two questions. City.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Derek Bowden.
Okay, Ms. Adams, I'm sure you're aware of the current political climate in the city of Pahokee. My question is, how do you plan to maintain impartiality and professionalism in decision-making?
My plan to maintain, to continue maintaining, as I have done, is working with staff, working with the community, working with the legislature, working with all of our stakeholders to ensure that we are properly moving forward, understanding what our needs are, continuing to look at every issue that we have, from everything from our marina to our roads, infrastructure, housing, and knowing what those needs are, and just continue to have inspiring collaborative conversations and engage in our community so that it is not just at the, being done completely by staff. Making sure that the commission is in tune with what our residents want. City Hall doors have always been open. At any time, you can set an appointment, make an appointment to come in because we're willing to listen, we listen, we understand what the needs are. So I just, I will make sure that those concerns are being heard and voiced and being able to move forward.
Second question, what strategies would you implement to improve morale and productivity amongst city employees who may feel demoralized or disenfranchised?
Well, I can only speak for myself. I have a really good relationship with staff. We talk on a daily basis, even over the weekend. We make, you know, making sure that they know that they can come to me, come to City Hall, and we communicate, we laugh, we joke, but we're making sure that we're working together as a team, and that has always been the case. We work together as a team. We just recently did a community-wide cleanup and Public Works was there, Parks and Recs was there, City Hall administrative staff was there. And even though we were working for the city, and we, some of us looked at it as a day of work, we enjoyed and we had fun. And I think making sure that every event that we do, regardless of whether it is a regular workday, that the camaraderie among staff and the morale is high. And we ensure that when you walk into City Hall, you do not feel as though it's cold and callous. We walk in there, if you walk into the front desk, you, you get our front desk person and she's always upbeat. And that same feeling continues as you walk through City Hall, walking towards the back of the building. And so every day, we ensure that everyone is good and, you know, we want to continue to make sure that happens. We laugh and we joke, but we know we have work to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, we'll have our Commissioner, Ms. Kyle Williams, provide two questions.
Good evening, Ms. Adams.
Good evening.
What type of leader are you?
I am collaborative, inspiring, I'm empathetic, empathetic. I am, I serve. I have, I make sure that, you know, I was, I was brought to this city to serve, so it has never been about me. It has been about the team. And I think I portray that, even when I stand in front of commission, when I'm asked to present for city projects. I think I have shown that I am here to serve. Everyone knows I'm here all the time, sometimes I have to be told to go home. But I think with that leadership, being dedicated and making sure that they understand that we are a team, it is not about me, being authoritative, but yet still being democratic and knowing that, you know, these are what, these are the tasks that we must handle, but making sure that everyone understands, making sure that staff gets professional development, making sure that whatever I have learned is not just for my knowledge, it is for everyone's knowledge. And so being able to be someone that, you won't ever see me sitting on the sidelines, you see me actually working. And so I expect that from all staff and they all know that, you know, if I can get out here, I expect for everyone else to get out there. And as I said, leading by example and making sure that staff know that we are one and we want to move our city forward. And so everything that I portray is true and honest and I am who I say I am. And making sure that, again, that staff knows that I listen to your concerns, the residents know I listen to your concerns, we come up with solutions. And that is who I think I am as a leader.
Okay, my next question is, how many years of experience do you have conducting strategic planning sessions with city commission or city council?
For the past three years, I have assisted Mr. Lucas in our strategic planning meeting with commission. Previous to that, as a development director, I ran strategic planning for Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I did strategic planning for the board, board development. So I have a wealth of experience doing that. And as I said, we will, this summer, start with strategic planning for the commission. Thank you.
What is the highest number of employees you have managed?
I would say the highest number of employees I've managed has been, since I have served as interim city manager with the city of Pahokee, I think it has been 39 being interim.
How many years of experience do you have managing a city commission or council meeting?
Serving as interim twice and being with the city since 2016.
Calculate that in years, for me, of months. Calculate that in years, for me, of months.
So it would be, this is twenty twenty-four, so take away the year that I was gone, so two years, I would say, I think we're at six years.
The last question would be asked by Commissioner Mike Ferguson.
Yes. Have you ever been disciplined by a current or past commission or council? If so, why?
No, sir, I have not.
You can ask for a clarification.
For question number... Because she gave dates, but not years. Question number five and six, you gave dates, but not years. Question number five says, how much work experience do you have as interim city manager? What was the years or what was the time?
So...
You gave months, but...
I started as interim in... I have to go back and think. April twenty twenty-one. I served until, I think, June of twenty twenty-one, Mr. Lucas was hired. August of twenty twenty-one, I was terminated. In March of twenty twenty-two, I was rehired back as interim city manager. I served as interim city manager until April twenty twenty-two, and Mr. Lucas was rehired as interim city manager. Or city manager, I believe. Does that clarify?
So that's what, four, four, four months?
Yeah. Yeah, as interim, yes ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Adams, that conclude our interview process. And we thank you again for participating and wish you luck.
Thank you for accepting my resume, my application, and have a good evening.
You asked the last?
Yes.
I think we're making great time. We have one more applicant to do. As soon as the commission passes up their totals, we'll be getting an interview for our last and final applicant of the evening.
You want to check the score right?
City Clerk, at this time, you may announce our last and final candidate for interim city manager position and have them come up if they're here. If not, we'll introduce them for live on Zoom.
Mr. Esteban Cardenas?
It's two that we've ruled, I mentioned that earlier, we had total nine, two with the group.
I thought that was hot on.
We have another one after this?
The one I just came and told you was ruled, I told her three was wrong.
Oh, three, yes, okay. Mr. Cardenas, thank you for coming and participating in our interview process for the interim city manager position. We wish, as, we wish everyone good luck in this endeavor. What we'll be doing this afternoon is asking you a series of questions. We have a total of eleven questions. They'll be rated from one to five, with hi, five being the highs. So an individual could get a total of fifty-five points if they rated five on each of the applications that we'll be doing. So without further delay, what we'll do in the beginning is have you do a presentation to the commission, giving some information on you, your background, your knowledge, your skills, your job employment, and others. We will be looking at appearance, professionalism, delivery, resume, job application, and work experience. You have up to fifteen minutes to complete this question, so you may begin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Esteban Cardenas, and I have been a lifelong Pahokee resident, born here in Pahokee in the hospital that was turned down. And I have lived here all my life. I have moved and traveled a bit, but it has mainly been vacations and jobs, not so. But like, my permanent residency has always been here in Pahokee. And I have a master's degree in economics. I have a bachelor's degree in economics. And I was able to get both of those degrees while performing undergraduate and graduate level research with multiple professors in different fields. I have traveled abroad to present my research. I have participated in national competitions. I have been in competitions in Oklahoma, Tennessee, New York, all because of the work that I've done with professors. Some on my own, where they guide me, and then others where I just assist what they do. And this has been multiple fields, mainly in economic development. Some have been in economic development for education in third world countries. Others have been in Hispanic assimilation in the U.S. and how the Hispanic goal has changed throughout the history of Hispanics in America. So wide spectrum of different research levels. And we even did research when it came to Bitcoin, when it was starting up and money supply and all of that. So I enjoyed it a lot. And I had, my professors, they, this, this sounds off the cuff to say, but it got to the point where my professors wanted me to work more hours with them. So I, they actually got rid, they had to make an exception for me. And I can no longer tutor students as a teacher assistant because I was so booked assisting professors with my research skills. So, and, and there's testament to that because I have the research that I've done and the competitions that I've competed in. All of this, always being a Pahokee resident. Graduated from Pahokee High School. I went to Pahokee Elementary, and I'm here. And now that I'm here, I still do things for my community. We talk to Mr. Osborne, I see Mr. Osborne every day because we're talking to him all day because we're doing soccer program. I do soccer program from kids eight to twelve to adults here in the city of Pahokee. So I'm involved with the community. I know what it takes to work with the city. I have been working as a citizen and trying to get programs running. And sometimes with success, sometimes with failure. But nonetheless, I'm always here. And I see, I've seen the climate of the political landscape in Pahokee and how it's changed and how it shifted. And the thing is that it's sometimes easy. And I've had, I've had commissioners, former commissioners tell me, like, you need to get more involved. And there's times that I consider, like, I, I, I do want to. But then there's other things too that I want to do. So right now, I currently, I work at Pahokee High School. And I'm a coordinator there. And I work helping kids, Pahokee kids, get to college and make sure they have scholarships when they go there. Because I know as most of the people here in Pahokee, when they go to college, they're going to be first-time graduates, and they're not going to have their parents that have a lot of support with them. And we see it, we see it a lot. So I try to make sure that I, I have a support system there because I went through it. And I don't want these kids that are also first generation to have to go through that. And I, and I really love what I do there. And I even got the opportunity, I got offered the opportunity to work with the county, with the, with the county, to go and be, to work, to work as an assistant with the, with the commissioner in our area when she got elected about a year ago. And I told her, and she told me, you could do a lot of good things for Pahokee at this level. But I told her, that's too far away from Pahokee. I want to do things from Pahokee within. Because that's where we really see things. If you look at all the big organizations that change things, all the events in history, there's always grassroots organization. Montgomery Bus Boycott was a grassroots organization. The outsiders then came in to help, but it was, it was there. It was from the people that live in the city that experienced it, that they really know what it is and what it requires for things to change. So that's, that's all my educational background. That's my personal background. And then when it comes to my career, I'm relatively young. But that being said, I have worked in politics. I helped work the, the Clinton versus Trump campaign. I worked doing a lot of political surveys and polling for that. And then when, after that happened, I also had, I got hired to do marketing with a business firm, national business firm. And I worked with them right out of college for about a year. Did a lot of management and marketing for over a hundred and fifty apartments, complexes all across the states. So it was a lot of communication with different people, with different views and different things. And it's always to try to help them, make sure that they're, that they have what's best at their disposal. My job, even at that position, was how can I get more clients at your door? So I've done the marketing, I've done this, I've done economic advisor. I currently am an economic advisor for St. Mary's Catholic Church, which is also my homegrown parish. So obviously, they, they, they saw that. They saw that they need to have someone that's homegrown to be in that position, and I'm currently in that position now. So I have economic advisement there. And although I have worked in all these different fields, I still, one thing that I'm still lacking, and I still always have considered that's somewhere in my heart, is working for the city of Pahokee from the inside. Because it's, we have to fix what's going on and all the different things and all the climate from within, from the heart, right? Because we can address it from the outside, but we have to really look at the inside, and that's where we can actually make change. If it doesn't start from the employees within, it's going to be hard for it to happen from the outside. And thank you.
Thank you. Let me start with, the next question is, why do you want to work for the city of Pahokee? And what can we expect from the first ninety days on the job?
So I briefly touched on why I would like to work for the city of Pahokee. Now to emphasize more specifically on the interim city manager position, honestly, I'm still debating about it, if I'm honest with you. And the reason why, I think, like, I, I really want to do something good for Pahokee. But then, when I look at the city management position and I look at the political climate and how it's been, I'm sometimes, I'm sometimes like worried about actually getting in. Like, I see how we act, and, and, and the commissioners and, and the city. Like, I see how sometimes we're like so careful about, because we're walking around red tape. It's like we're walking on shattered glass, we're careful to not step. And it's been like a defensive position. And because of that, sometimes I'm not sure if I want to be a city manager. But it's because of the love that I have for Pahokee that I'm actually want to do. And for the same desire that I don't think I, I'm not too sure if I want this position is because, is one of the reasons why I think I should get it. Because I'm not trying to do it, I, I don't even know the salary. I, I found out earlier today the salary, but like before that, I didn't know the salary. And I, I don't, I might not have the best experience, but it's, you're giving someone that isn't in the mud. Right? It's someone that is coming out from the outside, and sometimes we need that. Sometimes we need someone that hasn't been in to kind of see and tell us, oh, we've never seen it that way because we're so used to seeing it this way. And I understand red tape. I work in the school district. I understand there's legal policies, there's things that we have to do. I've been trying to get a program approved for my, for our school. I've been trying to get that program approved since December. It's been back and forth emails with this program and the school district. I understand. I, I, I get all of that. But sometimes we're so worried about not hurting our political advances, or sometimes so worried about not hurting ourselves and what we're trying to do that we sometimes neglect who we're actually trying to serve, right? And I get this because in the classroom, I know I have to serve the students. And sometimes I can try to worry so much about like, oh, well, how about, oh, me, oh, me, me, me. As a teacher, but no, like, my main thing, every time I walk in is for students. So a city manager, you walk in the office, and it's for the citizens of Pahokee. It's not for, you know, like, it's, it's not going to be for what other people will say. It's not what, it's like, if you're a citizen of Pahokee, how can I help improve your livelihood? Because unfortunately, the livelihood in Pahokee has not been increasing rapidly. It's been pretty stagnant. And that's not, that's not at par with the American standards because American standards have been increasing, the livelihood. But so something's going on in Pahokee because we're stagnant. We're not increasing at the rate that other cities in our same country, in our same state are. So it's like, okay, something needs to change. And if the change has to be drastic, so be it. Sometimes we need drastic change for... Sometimes we need drastic change for sec- like, sometimes we need to flip the table up so we can rearrange and see what's actually on the desk. Find those lost papers and figure out what's going on, right? So yeah, I come as an outsider, first ninety days is gonna be a big learning curve for me. But here's what I do know, every job I've ever been in, I'm so quick to adapt. And my employers, they've always told me, it's unfortunate that you're leaving. It's unfortunate that you're leaving, we wish you could stay and if you ever want the job, come back. Because I, I, I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves and get to work, that's what I'm for, that, that's, that's what I was taught to do. It's just my, my, my dad has been working all his life, twelve hour shifts, just taught us to work. And I'm not afraid to, wait, we have to do twelve hour shifts, we do twelve hour shifts. We gotta roll up the sleeves and go and do it, we go and do it, like, I'm not gonna shy away from work. And if I have to spend extra time to study, I think if you look at my GPA and you look at my uh school credentials, you will see that I know what it takes. To be amongst the hires, the highest achievers in that community. If I come here, I'm gonna strive to be in amongst the highest in our community. And we gotta make sure that we get then our community to go and to follow. Alright, because I, the only measure of my success right now is my student's success. So the city manager's success is this average citizen's success, and that's just basically how it's going to work.
Thank you. Commissioner Mike Fierson will provide the next two questions for you.
Yes, have you ever had to fire an employee? If so, what for and what was your process to terminate?
Alright, so I've only had to fire, I've only been in the position to have to fire an employee once. There was when I was working in a marketing firm, and it was right when I was fresh on the job. And my boss told me, he's like, okay, you know, sorry, but this is just one of the things that you're gonna have to do, alright? So he told me to be in the office with him when he fired someone, I had to fire someone two days afterwards, alright? And obviously, you know that you're about to change this person's life. So it's always taking it with delicacy and trying to figure out, okay, uh, uh, even if you did something wrong, right? It's like, my boss told me, and I will never forget, it's like my main goal is for you to walk out of this office. Feeling better than you were, right? Even if you're getting fired, and that's a tough thing to do, but it's like, look, if you're getting fired for whatever thing you're doing. Is we're gonna tell you, okay, look, this is the correction that needs to take place. Unfortunately, in our, in the case of our company, right, we lost money and we couldn't afford to keep the person. So we told him, unfortunately, our, our company, you know, it's just not gonna work out. But now you know so that when you go to other companies, alright? So it's, it's, it's always doing it with delicacy and keeping in mind that it's still a person. And even though they may have made some egregious mistake, is how can we still help this person leave somewhat satisfied? Cause they're lo- they're losing their job, so they're not gonna walk out happy, alright? But at least help them out and let them know that they're not out on their own yet.
Why did you apply for the interim city manager position with the city of Pahokee?
Okay, so I, I kinda touched that, uh, untouched on that answer a little bit, I don't want it to be repetitive, I know it's been a long night. But again, just my main focus is, I'm a born Pahokeean, I know I have to do some work. I know there's a learning curve, but I'm not afraid to work. And if it's interim position and it's only, and it's only gonna be on a test uh, a test standard. And it's gonna be like, okay, we're gonna be here for a bit and we'll see what happens, I'm not afraid of that. I'm not afraid to getting put to the test. And you, I'm sure that we will provide dividends. I know it, honestly, with me, it's gonna be more of a long-term project because of my age and because of my experience. But I know that when we do start with someone like my capacity. You're able to also help and, and learn on the job, and then that will be like learning for Pahokee. Not just city manager in some other city, no, you learn to be the city manager of Pahokee, that'll be my sole experience. So it'll be like precisely tuned for the job.
Next we'll have our Vice Mayor, Mervyn, ask you two questions.
The first question is, why have you applied, why, yes, I'm sorry. How much work experience do you have as an interim city manager or in municipal government field?
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't have any experience in that. Only closest thing I come to of working with the city is what I do and help Mr. Osborne and the Parks and Reps, Rec Department.
How many years of city budget experience do you have?
Yeah, so again, planning city budgets, not on my resume. I have helped plan multiple different budgets, like right now I currently work with the budget that I have for the program that I'm in charge in in the school. And I have to make sure that budget lasts us the whole school year. And then I have to make sure that we get more money to be added on to that budget for the next coming school year, so. And, and my degree is in economics, so we do a lot of budgeting. So it's not precisely on specific city budgets, but I have worked with multiple budgets before in my past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Commissioner Bowden provide two questions.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Cardenas. Um, my first question, can you hear guys, Henry?
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, it's good to hear that you're a fellow Pahokeean. Um, I'm sure you are aware of uh some of the challenges that we've had uh from a political standpoint. Uh, my question to you is, how do you, how do you plan to maintain impartiality and professionalism in decision-making? Uh, if chosen to be the interim city manager?
Yeah, good evening, so this to me, I, 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 I work in Pahokee High School. I've worked in Pahokee High School, I've had family members there, I, I have a family member there as a co-teacher. He's um, he's technically, I'm a, I'm a, I'm an administrator to him. So that's, you know, when you're at home, that's one thing, you're at a job, that's a different thing. So I know when it's work mode, I know how to separate my work and my life and, and my home life, like, it's not hard. Alright, and I, I'm crucial when it comes to that. I always insist, even like on my coworkers, like I, even my personal cellphone, I'm iffy on them having it. Like you wanna communicate with me, communicate through school, phone, or through the email, like that's how we keep everything professional. Even with my brother, if I'm trying to do something when it comes to school, like, hey, I need you to do this, it's always via email. Always via email, I can see him at home, but I, I, I don't, wouldn't talk about those things at home. What happens at home is personal, what happens on the job is for the job. And I, and that's just, that's my code of ethics, that's just what I've been taught, and that's what I plan to carry with me anywhere I go.
Okay, second question, uh, what strategies would you implement to improve morale and productivity among city employees? Uh, who may feel demoralized or disenfranchised from the many changes that take place from an organizational standpoint?
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing when it comes to running anything. And because doing, doing city manager is basically a CEO of, of a company, of a city. So from the experience that I've had and the companies that I've worked with, it's always, my goal. As a manager, as an administrator is, I want you to want to come to work. That, that, that's how I need to get it. So what do I have to do in the work environment for you to feel like it's not your job, rather like it's almost like a hobby? And it takes communication and we have to sit one by one with the different um, uh, people that work in the city of Pahokee. We have to talk like, okay, how can I make you feel comfortable at your job? What's lacking, what's missing, do you need resources? Do you need just someone to talk to, what's going on, right? And I think that, if you can make stylish personal communication, we live in the city of Pahokee. We don't have a lot of employees, it's not an impossible task for you to meet all of them at a personal level. Have lunch with them or something and just talk, just talk. All the great political leaders that have done things, that have done revolutions, that's what they've done. They go and they see people eye to eye, and they just sit across the table with them, and it's like, what's going on? Tell me your troubles, alright? And how, and then you take that back, you throw it on the drawing board. Five different people told me they have trouble with this, alright? Twenty different people that told me they have trouble with this, then that already sets your priority list, okay, I gotta focus on this right now. A lot of people have problem with this, right? So it's obviously, there's no like clear cut answer other than you have to meet eye to eye with these people, you have to communicate and let them directly tell you your needs, alright? Now, I'm not gonna lie, it's probably gonna be a lot of work towards the beginning, so it might take some time, right? But I'm very big at delegating responsibilities and making sure that everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we look at those job roles, and it's like, okay, these are your job roles, you gotta make sure you're doing these job roles. Because if you're not doing these job roles, then you make your administrator, your boss have more work, because you're not doing it. So just making sure everybody's culpable for their job cap- roles and make sure that they're all doing what they're supposed to be doing. Then that automatically will free up time, and then the administrator will also be able to go and meet face to face with the employees. So like, if in the first ninety days, there's like, we're busy with something else, the administrator can do the get together with their department. And then they can come up with a department thing, like, okay, this is what's wrong in our department, right? That might be at first, and then hopefully in the long run, we can establish a good city manager. So employee of the city of Pahokee relationship with all of the employees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two questions will be provided by Commissioner Kyle Wynn Williams.
Good evening, my first question is, Mr. Cardenas, what type of leader are you?
So I've been sitting back there thinking about that question the whole time. Um, I think, I think I'm a natural leader. And I only say this because people have told me this before. The people in charge, my bosses have said, they put me in leadership position, saying when I asked them, I'm like, why me? Like, I'm, got hired after Joe, yet you offered me leadership position instead of Joe, why? And he told me, you're a problem solver, you're just natural, you're just gonna see something and you don't sit back and wait for someone to tell you, you go and you do it. And then, not only do you go and you do it, but then you tell other people like, hey, let's go do that, that needs fixing, let's go do it, right? You don't sit around and wait. And this has been different variations of it, but different bosses have told me this. So I try to make sure I don't bother my boss as much. I do what I have to do and I know what I have to do. And I think that is what makes, like, not only am I doing these things on my own accord. But then I'm also putting the example for the people that work under me and work with me. It's like, you don't have to wait for someone to tell you to do this thing in order for you to do it. Like, if you see something that needs to get done, it's in your job description, your job responsibility, like why not? And if no one's getting it done, then start to inquire, why is this not getting done and who should be doing this thing, alright?
My next question is, how many years of experience do you have conducting strategic planning sessions with city commission? Or city councils?
So again, city commissioners, city councils, uh, none. Maybe when I've tried to organize soccer tournaments in the past with the commissioner a few years ago, with, with the um, the board. Uh, that might be the only thing, didn't really lead to much of that. Then we had to kinda come back to the scrap board after COVID and kinda did things a whole different route with Mr. Osborne, which I'm really appreciative of. So when it comes to that, not much. Planning, doing things, it's part of every job, just change a little bit of how it's done. Okay, you don't have to, now it's just for this specific thing instead of this other thing. But if you, if you can plan in the school district, if you can plan in organizing marketing for a hundred and fifty different apartment complexes. We can, I can adapt to what's necessary for the city.
What is the highest number of employees you have had to suit manage?
Alright, so the highest number of employees that I've had to manage, it's eight, alright? Um, not a high number, the company where I managed eight with. It was, we were the eight, and I was director. They were then in charge of like different regions, so indirectly, I managed the different regions. But it was only, I never communicated with the different regions, never, the, the different regions talking about like, like partial states, right? So like half of the states, like they're organizing that, and I was like, no, no, I just communicate with you, you have to go communicate with them directly, right? So I never had to handle a large direct number of communication, because like I said before, it's all about delegating. Because if I can have a good group of people that I'm working with, right, administrators and the different things, it's like. Then the other thing is just when we get to it, but right now it's like I need to get, I get a group, we gotta establish a great communication. And then we can go move forward from there.
How many years of experience do you have managing city commission or city council meetings?
Yeah, so, yeah, same, same number, right? I don't have any experience other than what I've done in my previous jobs, which are not city council, not city commission. But we do different meetings and stuff, so I've organized different meetings for the different, for a large number of people. I've organized an event that was a meeting for people from different states. We were expecting over four hundred people, right, and it was like a three-day event. I was head of that, one of my first responsibilities. Everything from booking travel, hotel, to everything from the minute that was gonna go on the entire event. So I, different planning, different events, the adjustment period.
And now the last question would be asked by Commissioner Mike Fierson.
Have you ever been disciplined by current or past commission or council, if so, why?
Yeah, so I have not been commissioned, I have not been questioned, I have never had any difficulty with any of my employments. With any of my bosses, and um, it has always been smooth sailing. I have made my mistakes, alright, I have made my mistakes, but my bosses have always known that we're a team. And that it wasn't just a single mistake, it was rather like, no, we're a group and uh, uh, different dyna- dynamics that go there. So me individually sitting in someone's office, never. Thank you all for your time.
At this time, while the clerk is adding up the totals, so we can discuss who would least uh the ranking being involved. We're gonna allow anyone from the art unit if they would like to make a citizen comment. You may be able to do so now. No, we didn't put any preference to home candidates. But you know, my personal feeling is if it's everything being equal. And their score is very similar, then my position would be to tip toward a home candidate. That's just my opinion, it's not the reflection of the entire city commission, but no preference at this point, right?
Person had a different perspective, so why are we asking everybody the same question when it don't apply to them? Cause some of the questions they already had answered by the interview, and then we had to ask the same question.
I, I think earlier we did mention going forward in the commission uh. looking at the permanent city manager, we would come up with some of our own questions. Say for instance, we're gonna ask twenty-five, each of us will get an opportunity to present twenty-five and we'll choose from that. But what happened in this process indicated normally, we'll hire staff to help create the questions. And we had a timeframe, we, we had seven days. Uh, we even wanted to have a proud meeting. So everyone would be on the same page of the process and be able to get some input in it. But this was and more, more so a appointment versus the traditional city manager type interview. So it was a little change in, in the timeframe.
It's just that some question just didn't make sense to ask, you know.
Yeah, and I would say this too, if we're coming up with our own individual question, which is fine, but when you go to the point where you asking different candidates, different question, it's not a fair lea- uh, lever playing. So whatever question we come up with.
No, I, I understand that point too. I would say, I know it was fair. I'm not saying it wasn't fair. It's just that it didn't apply to everybody.
Right. Yes, I understand that.
May I speak, ma'am? Mr. Scott, are you meaning like some of the questions weren't pertaining to the um, applicants? That's why I was asking the question for the process. Do we interview everybody or do we you know, eliminate the ones who didn't meet the qualifications? Because the minimum qualifications, that's what I was asking, that we set up. Everybody didn't meet them, at least the minimum qualification. Everybody didn't meet them, but we interviewed everybody and that's what I was asking in the beginning.
I think I may have suggested it earlier, but I think for the permanent position, we need to look at each one of us coming up with two or three questions and then we can get together or have a meeting prior to that and put the questions together that way and they could be more geared toward the position and the uh, particular city too.
I even think, I was looking at the grading scale. Um, we had it here. I, this was my first time seeing it. It wasn't in the packet when we got it. This wasn't on the back of it. Okay, so, cause even if we can look at that, because some of that was not even pertaining to us trying to um, rate the questions. Some of this wasn't even pertaining to that. So you know, look at, you know, when you're looking at it.
Does the clerk have the tally of the rankings?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to give you the information by Commissioner Dan Total or how do you want?
At this point, I mean, if it need to be broken down, but right now, we just wanna see the ranking of each.
I'm going by the scores. Um, out of once, out of two twenty, Mr. Mike, Michael Jackson's had one ninety-eight. Out of two twenty, Ms. Carmen Davis had one ninety-one. Out of two twenty, Mr. Howard Brown had one eighty. Out of two twenty, Ms. Janelle Adam had one sixty-seven. Out of two twenty, Ms. Isabel McDonald had one thirty-two. And out of two twenty, Mr. Cardenas had ninety-one.
We got a lot of ears and eyes listening, so, but it appears to me that Mr. Michael Jackson scored the highest on the score. He scored one ninety-eight. The second highest was uh, Ms. Davis. Former commissioner, uh, city manager of Lake Worth Beach scored one ninety-one. And Mr. Howard scored one eighty. So those are the top three highs of rated scores for the interview. Now, the commission would have to end up making a motion in a second and all of that, but are we comfortable with going with the highs? So we need discussion to further uh, decide what our ranking is. And I don't know, normally you would in these cases go with the high score, but that don't mean we have to. I want to be fair and honest and equal to everyone who applied. You know, if you got a procedure where you interviewing, you normally go with the highs. I'll give you an example. For instance, it's, one was the highest and that person you know. And we would have to negotiate anyway, their salary request may be way above what we're looking for and or can afford. That may be some consideration to maybe adjust and go to the next high. I'm just using some type of uh, explanation why we would think about going to the highs. There's, there's, there's other reason too, but I just wanna make sure we're being fair and, 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 and equal to, to everyone who applied. Conversation to get us started. Uh, I mean, if, if, if the motion, if everyone is more in consensus with that train of thought, then we would make a motion on being those who, the highs. But it may be some other thought out there. I just wanna hear from everybody and make sure that what I'm saying seem fair to all involved as much as possible. I'll put it that way.
We can speak now?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I just wanna say, I think uh, what we had was a fair process and these are the numbers that we have. And I just think it's appropriate to go with the highest number that we have. It's everyone fairly graded.
Commissioner Mike Fierson.
I agree.
I don't have a problem with the number of the highest, uh, Mayor Bab, but I'm still gonna stick to what I said prior in the last commission meeting. And right now, we're in the process of a lot of critical things in hand. Not saying that Mr. Jackson or any of these candidates couldn't come in and probably put their hand, hand in. But I think to be familiar with as far as if we were choosing a city manager. Point, I think would probably be a, a little different, but now as an interim, for me, for me, I would still stay that we need familiarity with what's going on in our city. We have, if there is a lot of stuff, and I know Mr. Jackson have been and actually, I've, I've, I think I scored him pretty well on, on the thing also. But um, as far as our interim, I, I'm gonna still stick to what I said in the last meeting. Because we have a lot of issues that's going on. But I am with the consensus of the commission. I can, I can, I can, but I'm gonna stick to that as Mrs. Adams, but I am.
And I'll just say this, uh, I agree for fair process. We need to uh, go along with the highest ranking individual uh, that we had. I also would agree that uh, Ms. Adam during the interim would have been a good person to continue until we got a, a, a full-time city manager. However, I'm gonna say this also, I would also look at the distance of the ranking between the high three and the other that we may consider. You know, if Ms. Adams was closer or near the top, then I might, my, my, my thought pattern could have changed a little, but the fact that the ones that hired in the top three uh, was a little substantially higher than what her, her ranking was. And I'm just using her as an example, but whatever the other three or four was ranked. So I'm gonna allow Commissioner Bowden at least make a comment if he's uh, choose to uh, do that. Uh, Commissioner Bowden.
You know, I think we had uh, you know, some really good candidates here. Um, I was definitely impressed with a few of them. I wouldn't necessarily go with the higher ranking. I don't necessarily agree with that. Um, I know this is kind of subjective for everyone. Um, I, I, I stick to what I said in the mission, commission meeting. However, I would be, I would like to, uh, I don't know if that's even possible. But regardless of whoever, we got some really good candidates with some, some, some really good talent here. We have some really good talent here and eve- we should probably even explore the possibility of, of getting you know, anyone who may have come short on a, you know, having them still join us in a different capacity. Uh, if it's, if it's at all possible. Um, given the situation, uh, like I said, I'm gonna say what I said in the last commission meeting. Uh, moving forward, uh, right now at this point in time, but what we're dealing with or whatever, I would, I would still go with Ms. Adams.
At this point, we do have a majority who has indicated that we should go with the highest ranking based on the uh, interview that was uh, just completed. Uh, so I would entertain if that's the consensus, which is appear to be uh, someone to make a motion. We do have a resolution already, not with anyone name on it, but it's already prepared uh, to have that done at this special meeting. So you could make a motion, of course, would have to get a second and a majority of the vote to move it forward.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me to read it into the record, please. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, appointing an interim city manager, providing for an effective date.
May I, may I say one thing or point out one thing? Mr. Jackson is overseas. You're gonna need somebody this week. He's at a funeral. He said that right off the bat. Just put that out there. We could, we could still appoint in-house a temporary city manager. We'll, we'll go ahead and if, if, if this, I don't know how long he's planning on being out, but I'm thinking and you can correct me, uh, city attorney if I'm off base. We could still move forward with Mr. Jackson's appointment at the interim city manager. And designate a staff person to be in charge until the time he's back in the United States. I don't know how long that gonna be though, I'm not sure. I may be a little
Well, the
have to help on this.
Sure, the only um, the only ability you have in your code is to appoint, and I can read the language. Um, is to point an interim and that, that you can do with or without a resolution. Um, it doesn't talk about any other kind of appointment that you would be able to do underneath that interim. So um, there is specific language about interim city manager in section two dash nine eight of the city code and it um, it talks about if the city manager's position is vacated for any reason. And prior to the date that the city commission has appointed a new city manager by vote um, to fill a vacancy that you can appoint an interim. So you all really don't have the authority to do, you know, anything you know, a staff person in, in lieu of or anything like that. It only talks about an interim city manager as your authority for appointment.
Did Mr. Jackson indicate how long he was gonna be out of this state? Because Mr. Luca, yes, you can try to reach in. Mr. Luca's uh, date of resignation is effective May eleventh. So we still have like four days? Right. So we have four days for him to at least be back here in time. If not, we can go with the alternative that the majority would favor. And he would still have an opportunity to interview for the uh, the permanent when that time come.
So what will we do? Go from where? So he's not gonna be back with?
Hello, Mr. Jackson? This is Tijuana from the city of Pahokee. I was calling to see when would you be returning from Jamaica? They were trying to see if you would be available if you were appointed. He's returning Friday.
He'll be in the United States Friday, here in the Glaze.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
He'll be turning, returning a day before Mr. Lucas Fisher's resignation uh, take effect, which would been on the eleventh. So we have the option of moving forward with the uh, appointment of uh, Michael Jackson as the new interim city manager based on that information we're receiving.
Ready for a motion? Uh, move that we hire Michael Jackson as our interim city manager.
I'll second.
I would just make an amendment to include the salary which currently stands at one twenty, one hundred and twenty thousand. It is a move by Commissioner Mike Fierson and properly seconded by Commissioner Cowan Williams for the appointment of Michael Jackson as the new interim city manager at a salary of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the current salary of our current city manager. Call for questions. Here in honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McFerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden? Vice Mayor Mervin?
No.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by three, one vote with Commissioner Bowden appearing to be absent from the vote uh, due to technical difficulties. And we'll have a brief comment from the commission if you have anything you'd like to suggest. And I'll start with Commissioner Mike Fierson.
Just, you know, what I emphasized earlier, um, before we make, do our interviews for our permanent city manager, that we all come up with at least two to three questions and maybe meet before then and come up with a pool of questions that we've developed ourselves.
I also wanna thank everybody for participating. I know it wasn't an easy process, it never is, but we did what was right and what was fair. We could have took an easier route out and say less a point without this process. We have been criticized before for not being open and fair to everyone who have an interest in any of our position and I think we accomplished that. Also wanna say that as everyone has reiterated, we had some great candidates. We had some outstanding folks. had some outstanding folks, uh, that did apply, and hopefully, the permanent search would be similar, that we would have some good candidates that we could look forward to interviewing and hopefully, uh, securing if that's the case. Commissioner Cowan.
I just want to say thank you to all the citizens that came out and also that listened, and I just want to thank you for a great experience, commission, that we were able to agree to disagree and get on the task of moving our city forward. Good night.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Mervin.
I just want to say thanks to all of the candidates that did come and came out, and I think we got, it was, it was some good, good, um, candidates for city managers that were, with a wealth of knowledge of being a city manager. So I'd like to thank them for taking the time out to even want to be a part of the city of Pahokee, and hopefully they will stay in the fight room and get ready to choose our permanent city manager.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the, uh, special meeting.
Second.
Then moved by Vice Mayor Mervin, promptly second by Commissioner Mike Fierson for the adjournment of the meeting. Call for question. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner McFerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Meeting adjourned at nine-thirty-five PM.